Morning. Unmute her.
And Ms. McDowell and Councilwoman Ryan English, please unmute your devices for roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Herbert?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Ms. McDowell?
Here.
Ms. Reckonan?
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, would you care to do the invocation?
Would love to. Very, very bow to heads, please. Heavenly Father, please bless this beautiful day in Columbia. Bless all of our citizens, bless our staff, bless those on council to do what is right for the people of the city of Columbia. Help us to be mindful of our responsibilities and our accountability as we go forward in this beautiful day. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Reckonan and Council, we are excited to move along, some discussions, updates, really regarding several initiatives, projects in the city. As we are approaching the budget season, it was very important for us to share some of this in addition to a deeper dive on additional items about the day of the street. Do you think we've settled on a day or getting close to day and a half? Thank you.
Oh, where's that?
Thank you, Erica.
That's a Monday and part of Tuesday. Correct.
And part of Monday and all Tuesday.
And that's in Columbia.
So we don't have a meeting that day?
In Columbia.
In Columbia.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm in.
Thank you all so much for that.
What's it easy, what's it?
No, no need to, no need to belabor it. We're there. Mission accomplished.
All right.
So item one is very near and dear to me and my heart and the team, retention and recruitment strategy, as I discussed with you during our last budget cycle. And you all so graciously agreed, we are moving forward with this strategy. And Ms. Denise P. Davis, Dr. Davis, Director of Human Resources, will give you some updates regarding our employee engagement and evaluation process, which are some key elements of this strategy. We'll get started with that. And Councilman Bailey, if you have any questions as we go, just let us know. We've already talked with you some about this, so.
Will do.
I think it'll bring you pretty current with these.
Ms. Wilson, and thank you, Council, for allowing me this opportunity. I'm excited to share some initiatives that have been implemented in the Human Resources Office over the last several years. I think Ms. Wilson talked about the discussion. Erica, come for me, okay.
Just make sure it's turned on.
Oh, all right. It's on. Okay. So I believe Ms. Wilson went over what the outline would look like, and I'm going to just start with some of the things that have happened over the years with reference to compensation. In July of 2023, we implemented a 3% merit increase for all employees. This year, we implemented, well, two years ago, last year, we implemented a new step structure for the police department, and the police has had the opportunity to enjoy their second year as a part of that particular step program. So that's one, one thing that we've also done for them. I know that you are aware that we've been working real hard to implement a step program for the fire department that is now in place. And as it relates to the performance evaluation for fiscal year 2324, at the end, there will also be some type merit increase implemented.
But the merit, the merit increase is, is part, the merit increase is going forward as part of, of the rehab of the evaluation process that you all implemented.
Yes.
I think it'd be very helpful if you would talk a little bit about that, because I'm not sure that everybody knows what.
It's part of the.
What that evaluation process is, yes, it's a part of it. It's actually toward the end. Some of the hiring practices that have been implemented is that we have, what I believe, successfully implemented, or reintroduced, the annual career fair. We've implemented individual department hiring events, and that simply means that if the water department called and it said they needed assistance with their particular hiring, we will go over and speak with them and determine what is necessary to make that happen and put forth some recruitment strategies in place to get people in place that may be able to occupy those particular jobs. We've expanded the talent acquisition department, or the area in my department, to be able to accommodate the hiring demand citywide. We've restructured the city of Columbia's high school career internship program. We've implemented the talent initiatives with two districts here in Columbia. Richland Two, in that particular district, the title, that particular program is titled Premier to Career, and in Richland One, that program is titled One City Future Ready. And the one with Richland One's been in place for about two years, for three years, Richland Two, for the last two years. We've developed and implemented Ready to Respond program that's a partnership with SC Works, and they are going to help us create a pipeline to fill our positions in the fire department. We've also developed and introduced Talent in the City. You may have seen commercials in the morning when you're getting ready with reference to that. This past week, our first segment aired, and we're going to share that segment with you now, Ms. Erica.
Oh, yeah, I did like that.
With Stacy and Support Services.
Yeah. He never says anything, so. And he was talking.
He was.
Ever get a sign the universe is trying to tell you something? At University of Phoenix, you can earn your competency-based master's degree for under 11K in less than a year. Get started at University of Phoenix.
Hi, my name is Sharon Nelson, HR Manager, Responsible for Talent Acquisition for the City of Columbia. Talent in the City is our effort to highlight and showcase the departments with the City of Columbia, the department's impact players, as well as the talent who make the city run every single day. These impact players and departments oftentimes don't get the spotlight that they deserve, but without them, the City of Columbia would not run as beautifully a machine that it is.
As the city electrician, I'm responsible for all of the building maintenance throughout the entire city. Whether it be technical lines, repairing receptacles, you know, adding upfit offices or what have you. I was here for 16 years before I left, and I was gone for four months, and decided to come back. This department is like a family. I mean, it's a, it's a swell place to work. I enjoy giving my talents back to our community as our capital too. So besides the benefits for my family, that's got to be the top three. A really good friend of mine got me involved in the trade, and I just took a natural liking to it and just stuck with it. Support Services is, I consider us the backbone of the city of Columbia. You know, we do building maintenance, we do hardware maintenance. The best way I explain it is my team is responsible for the roof to the concrete and everything in between, you know. We manage, we got an electrician on staff, we have HVAC tech on staff, we have HVAC helper on staff, we have, I got a physician, he's over contracts, he manages all the janitorium and hands control. We got a construction team, I have a two-man construction team. They do all the smaller renovation projects, projects we have in the city of Columbia. And then I got like eight guys that maintain the facilities. They, each guy has about eight buildings that he's responsible for. I consider myself a hermit because I, you know, I don't like to, I'm like, you know, I'm intentional about trying to be behind the scenes, I'm intentional about pushing my team forward, you know. In this position, I think I get a lot of credit, but it's not me, it's my team, you know. My girl, I want her to come with. That's very important. So to me, it's easy to explain my journey. My journey is pretty simple. You know, after graduating high school, I attended men's technical college. You know, being honest about it, you know, I went there for electronics, you know, it was a little difficult, so electrical became easier. I did that, then I worked for a company for 16 years, and they taught me a lot. And it was a great company, and they instilled in me work, they instilled in me a good trade. And then after 16 years, I decided to start my own electrical company. You know, I became an electrical contractor, still am an electrical contractor to this day, you know, if you ask me who I am, you know, I always say I'm an electrician, you know, that's who I am to my point. But what I do now is, you know, I'm the administrator of the city of Columbia, and I love it, you know. I think the city of Columbia is the perfect spot to move up. You know, if you want to come in at an entry-level position, they're forward an opportunity to move up. You could, I'm just going to speak on myself, you know, I came in to ask the electrician, and look at me now, you know, and with my group, we have entry-level positions, we have HVAC helpers, we have building aids, and everyone normally comes here, they stay here, and they tend to move up step by step. But, you know, I started with the city of Columbia, asked the electrician, did that for a few years, I'm going to say probably four years, and the assistant administrative position came available, so they promoted me from within. And then I kept, you know, I'm going to call it digging, you know, kept working, kept trying, and then the administrative position came available, and I was getting that opportunity too, so I feel like I've been in the right spot every time when there's a chance, an opportunity to get promoted, you know, I was in the right spot, and it's worked out for me. The responsibility of being the electrician for the city of Columbia building maintenance is, it's a, it's a pretty special privilege, and I, like I said before, I feel very honored to give my talents back to the city, our capital. Started out 25 years ago in the field for a private contractor, worked there for seven or eight years. Came to the city at the Traffic Engineering Division, and wanted to get out of the elements a bit more, so this opportunity came over here to support services.
For more information about this position and its department, please visit www.columbiasc.com.
So Talent in the City, yes, whoo-hoo. Talent in the City came about as of, as, after a conversation that Karen and I were having about the career fair. The career fair has been an opportunity for interested employees to come and kind of evaluate us once a year. And so when she brought this to me, I thought it was a really good idea, and I, you know, went through Pam to make sure that we could do this. This is strategically done every week leading up to our April career fair, and we have about 13 departments that will be highlighted, and the ones that were chosen were solely depended upon their, the vacancies that were out there for us to fill, and so we're hoping that that will help us get to that end. Sharon has done a fantastic job. Those of you who know Stacy know that he is not a person that likes being out front. In fact, he said that. But when she goes out to film these segments, she puts them at ease, and there's a level of comfort and trust there that, and you'll see as time goes on, when you see the segments, that they're trusting her, and they're doing a great job, and they're looking like they're enjoying it, which is the most important thing. So thanks for the opportunity to share that.
Denise, did you, one of the things we talked about is doing more than one career fair, because you had such a good response when you did it. Have you thought furthermore about trying to do it more than once?
Yeah, certainly, we can, we can continue to look into that. What I will tell you is that what we do with the information that we get from that one is the continuous follow-up. And that has been the reason why we've expanded that particular, the area of our department, the acquisition department, because when we get people interested that day, when we get resumes, we're continuing to fall back on, on those particular things. But certainly, we can, this is a, this career fair is not cheap, it's, but, but it's very well-done, and we get a lot of interest. So we're hoping that we'll get about 100 or so more people this year. In the past, it's been between 300 and 400, and we're hoping to get, get a few more, but we will definitely consider that as an option.
The date been determined?
It's the 25th, I think, April. I think it's April 25th, yeah.
And so, I guess, in follow-up, does that mean, are you saying that you get so many applications at that time that you have plenty to work through throughout the year?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, didn't make that clear. Yes, we have, we have plenty to work through throughout the year.
Okay. And then, do we have any, and it may be in here, outcomes of the last one, how many hires or?
I, I do have that information, but I'll have to forward it to you, because I don't want to tell you something that's incorrect. But every year, Sharon does give me, you know, kind of the outcome of, of where we landed.
And then what's, what's a lot of money?
Um.
It's the government, everybody.
Yeah. Hmm, 15,000.
Is most of that venue space?
No, it, it's, it's food mostly for the people who come to participate, like city of Columbia employees.
But the venue is not, well, they probably work with us if we continue to have it at that venue, but.
Right.
It's not gratis. They don't, they didn't come.
Yeah, it's, it's not, well, the venue is free, but all the other things that come along with it, like if you need, yeah, if you need any internet, if you need.
It was not free.
So, yeah, yeah.
The venue never offered. We keep having it. Maybe need extra coffee, what do you?
Yes, you know, you have a little condiments, and we didn't really go, I mean, we had water and coffee. We didn't have any kind of, oh, we had box lunches for lunch, but I was talking about the setup at the beginning, you know, it was just water and coffee.
How many current vacancies do we have, positions?
We have about 112 right now, what you see.
That's based off which number? Because, you know, pre-COVID, we were at close to 2,500, and I think we deemed through over the year that we didn't need to fill all those. So what's your baseline number that you're trying to get?
2,200 is the baseline.
Because max employment is 2,200.
100%, yeah.
And that includes everybody?
That includes CPD and?
Yes, fire, CPD, 911.
Say that number again, 100 and?
112, about 112. And it, it, it changes every day. It just depends. What you might see on the website may list positions, but there may be several of those positions that are vacant as well, so the website wouldn't be a good determinant as to actually how many positions are vacant. Okay, so we're going to go past hiring practices.
The one thing I didn't see in there, one of the things I think y'all worked on with changing too, was the requirements for jobs, taking into account people's experience more than just if you had an degree, and you know how we used to have it.
Right. We have, so I didn't put that in there because it really kind of depends, and we just evaluate every job as it comes. We have gone to equivalencies versus just, you know, having a certain number of years of experience in that particular area, so we have, have done that. We have waived the requirement for a driver's license if they don't have to drive, you know, for the job. And those are the two that really kind of stand out more than any, the equivalencies were big, and I think departments really appreciated the latitude to be able to do that.
That's what we heard from the employees saying, you know, we got friends that we could get here to work, but.
But these obstacles that we have.
I think we are now, from my understanding, and I think that's a great change for us, because I think we missed out on some talent before.
Yep. We have been attempting to provide our employees with some training and development opportunities. We repurposed our training administrative position, and we've hired an employee engagement and development manager. We have introduced, we've taken an opportunity to introduce him by meeting with various departments throughout the city and to inform department managers and supervisors of his purpose. And we've also started to discuss with departments the different engagement activities that will take place throughout the year that will include the training and development.
Yeah, I forgot to ask a question earlier. When we were talking about Richland One and the internships and everything, one of the things that I don't think we've taken advantage of, and the business community we're introducing to, but the Hayward Career Center is set up, and I don't know if we can play a better role in that as a city. And they have a $100,000 CDL simulator there that teaches not only stick shift, but today's modern push-button and everything else. The diesel mechanics that they got there, the, you know, automotive piece, the welding piece, we've got a lot of business community that we're going to take over there to introduce to try to boost it up and expand, and talking to the Secretary of Labor, I think there could be some funding that could help them boost that program. Is there a way for us to integrate in that a little bit more and, and build it up? Because I think it's an underutilized asset that when you go out there, you go, I can't believe all this is here and we haven't taken advantage of it.
Well, interesting that you would say that, because three years ago, when we started the One City Future Ready with Richland One, there was only one CDL program, and it was at Eau Claire, and they were starting one at another school, but at that particular time, it was only at Eau Claire. And we went out to try to get those kids interested, because we were in desperate need of CDL drivers. As a result of that, today, that program is what, exactly what you described. And Sharon and the talent acquisition team, last, just last week, went out to tour, because as a part of the One City Future Ready initiative, we're going to be incorporating all that Hayward has to offer.
That's awesome.
So we are, we are doing that as well.
Yeah, we've got a group of auto dealers who are struggling for mechanics that want to go and invest and boost that we're taking out there, and Southeastern Freight Lines and some other major trucking trying to take advantage, because a lot of, everybody's having the same problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can't get talent.
Keep in mind Mr. Man Lawhorn at the Urban League, as those partnerships keep developing, because he reached out to me recently about CDL, and if we, as a city, not so much for the connection with the school districts and the high school, but he was asking more about from a job perspective, was that like a certification or something that we had within the city? But I think that might, I didn't tell him that part, so that might be good information for him too.
Okay.
If they can collaborate.
Sounds good, I'll reach out. So to date, we have several courses that we're offering as a part of our professional development program. The first three you see there, the verbal communication, the personal accountability and professionalism, principles of teamwork and collaboration and trust. Every single employee in the city is able to take those three courses, and those three courses really optimize the, the core, of core competencies that are, are being stressed through our process, through our evaluation process. We're going to have coaching, supervisory practices, and the five choices of extraordinary productivity. Those are set to start in the spring. And then there's a series of courses for leadership development. Currently, we've had Ashley Wilkerson to come in to present Winning From Within, winning, yeah, Winning From Within, and we're going to have Courage to Lead by Mr. Morgan Lee. He's coming up on February 20th. We have our employees in leadership positions go to leading edge, we have them participate in local government leadership programs, the South Carolina Executive Institute, and the ICMA University.
Do you know how many people have taken advantage of some of these programs?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you that in just a second. All right, all right. Since we began these professional development opportunities, and that, and they started in September of 2023, and up until January of 2029, 20, January 29th, 2024, we've had the general courses offered, and they're listed there. We've offered 20 courses, and they're four-hour sessions, and we've had 345 attendees.
Is that individual employees, or does that overlap across the?
That is individual employees. That's a good question, but yes, that's individual employees. We've had two sessions with Ashley Wilkerson, Leaders, Winning From Within, and there have been 53 attendees for that particular session, and there'll be two more with Ashley. And then we just wanted to highlight the numbers of the departments, and these are just numbers, not percentages, but the departments that have sent the most people to these sessions have been the Parks and Rec Department, Engineering and Support Services. And we've heard nothing but great and wonderful things about what they think about it. They seem to really enjoy. I've made it my business to go to make sure, to every single one, to just have an idea of what is being offered, and they're, they seem to be having a really good time.
Is there a possibility for us to add a customer service piece to that? You know, we talked about early on trying to emulate some of the Chick-fil-A and some of the other processes, you know, because we have so many employees that touch our residents.
Absolutely.
And I think with a little bit of boosting and ideas, they'd feel more comfortable, you know, I mean, you think about it, how many of our employees that are in the field that, I mean, they're, they're our ambassadors.
Right.
So can we give them a toolkit with that? Could we add that somewhere in there? Possibility?
We've actually done that.
That good, I like that a lot.
Yeah, we have identified a consultant to administer those or to facilitate those sessions for us. We just have not been able to pin down the date yet.
That's great, that's great news.
Yes, we do have that in the works.
I want to share with Pam, a card, two cards, one for you, one for Pam, that I received and that, they do that. They have specific knowledge with the public safety sector, but they retool their, some of their classes for non-s sworn staff as well, so.
Okay.
And it might be one of our former employees, Captain Matt Marsh, if you've ever seen him in action, he's quite the facilitator, but he just retired, but he's going to be doing some of that work as well.
That's great.
Yeah.
I had a really good interaction with a parking attendant in Five Points.
Oh, good.
Last week, did my haircut, the meter was broken, and I saw her walk in, and I said, so I'm parked right there, and the meter's broken, so am I okay to park here or not? Okay to park here. She said, you're okay to park there. She asked me which car was mine, I told her it was my Suburban, and then I said, here's, I'll give you 50 cents, and she said, I don't want it. Like that. I said, I'll take it. She said, no, no, no.
She gave you two tickets.
Anyway, but it was a, that's a typical, normal interaction that we want somebody from the public to have with one of our employees, and we want them, and I said, do you want me to report the meter, or would you like, you're going to report? She said, I'll report.
That's right. Two for two for parking, so this morning, I heard a similar interaction from someone who's pretty close to me. The veteran tag was on the vehicle, which he's like, I still need the meter, but usually they. The veteran tag was on the vehicle, which he's like, I still need the meter, but usually they charge me anyway. And she said, no, sir. She like made a whole point, you are not supposed to feed the meter when you have a veteran tags. And I will make sure, you need to tell us that if you've been getting tickets and you have a veteran tags. We're not supposed to do that, so.
Pass that along, thank you. That's wonderful to hear because often it's a negative.
Man, I get a lot of, I don't, I don't share all my, I don't share all my war stories.
One follow up question. Do the employees themselves get to volunteer to go or is it that their people pick who goes?
A little bit of both. A little bit of both, like Ms. Wilson said, they do get to volunteer. And when they fill out their forms, they have to get approval by their supervisors. But they do volunteer themselves to go. And then, you know, for some of the leadership sessions, a lot of our ACMs and the directors will send people to those.
And it should be a little bit of, you know, carrot, a little bit of a carrot here. Because as Denise is about to go into with the evaluation process, this is also factor in to the competencies that would have, I'll let her talk about all this. But we want to see that this is occurring for every single employee, that they're being voluntold or they're volunteering. But it ought to be documented that they're doing this.
You know, going back to what the mayor said about customer service. And I think it's important for us to recognize the world we live in. So we live in a very institutional world that's not designed around relationships. And we live in a very compliant driven world. And I had one of those wake up calls myself last week with one of my good customers. And in the, our main contact said, we're in the hospitality business. And your people need to make sure that they're in the hospitality business. So, but, but what happens is over time, because of the, you know, we live in a very institutional and compliant world, that tends to do this over time and you don't recognize it until it's not acceptable. So I think it's important that, that's a really, it is. It's, it's important to, to talk about it and recognize it and reinforce it that, that we're, you know, we're part of, the city of Columbia is, I would consider as hospitality, not institutional. So, so like I said, I had my own wake up call last week. So it's, it's, everybody's going to have to have that mentality.
Yes, I agree. So moving forward through June 30th of 2024, the end of the evaluation period, we're going to continue to offer those general course courses. The emerging leader courses will continue to be offered as well. And the leadership courses will continue to be offered, but we will add one more facilitator. As I mentioned earlier, Morgan Lee. And he is going to be facilitating three sessions and they are on the Courage to Lead. Okay, so a couple of years ago, Ms. Wilson gave my department, HR department, an opportunity to pilot an alternative work schedule. And we had a few hiccups at first, but I thought that, you know, after COVID, things went really, really smoothly. We developed some goals, we developed some non-negotiables. And they were developed among the team so that, you know, if anything were to come up, that they would be held accountable to those particular, those particular goals. But we have settled on two different schedules, a four 10 hour day schedule and a three in office and two day remote schedule. We have 15 departments citywide, that's about a third of our departments that are participating in this. And it, and, and it kind of ebbs and flows, you know, who's participating and what's going on. The department directors have an opportunity to just pull that back anytime they see that there may be, you know, our, our service delivery isn't up to par. But it's going really, really, really well.
How, how are we measuring that? And could you explain a little bit too how that works? Obviously, you know, everybody can't work Monday through Thursday or whatever, obviously that. But also, how many people are eligible for three in the office and two remote? Because I, I, I'm curious how that works.
So I will explain to you what, what we did. And every single department head had the opportunity to assess their operation. So of course, you know, those persons who work in 911 and fire department, police department, they of course can't work and, and yeah, what the difference with that type of schedule. In the HR office, we're working a three in office, two remote. Because we have more than one person in almost every position, we're able to provide the same delivery of service as if both of those particular persons were in the office. So for instance, if my, if one of my specialists is in the office on Monday, then that person may have, may be off on a Tuesday and Thursday that particular week. And then office Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then the next week they flip flop. And so we, every department is able to determine what works best for their department. And did it, what specifically is your question about how it works? Because in our department, that's how it works. We're, we're, we're three, two, and they just kind of flip flop. So if we have someone working Monday, Wednesday and Friday one week, we have a different group working Tuesday and Thursday and then the next week they just kind of.
Well, I guess just fundamentally understanding too because of the way we're set up. I mean, if you have a long time employee because of vacation time, because of holidays and this and that, it's a tremendous amount of time out of the office already on top of that. So how do you fill that gap? Because, you know, one of the things we've always talked about is we always have to hire 1.4 people for every job because of the longevity of life, which is, you know, a good thing to have. But how does that balance, you know, to make sure that things are continuing? How do you measure that? Because a lot of people are now coming, you know, coming back to the office. And I think there's an advantage. I don't think every position fits that mold. You know, obviously you have to figure that out as a department head. We, we don't know that. I'm just curious how you, how it works from a, a practical standpoint to deal with those other factors that play into it.
Right.
And how do you measure the remote work, you know? And in, you know, how is that, how are the employees affecting each other? I mean, is there, are they still able to, you know, do a lot of crossover? Because I do think that, you know, what, what I'm seeing and reading in all these studies are that a lot of businesses are struggling because the socialization of the employees, especially when you're dealing with people to people, and that's your job more than anybody else's is people to people. How that affects it. So I'm just curious how y'all have measured all that. I didn't know we were doing that, but look, you gotta try. I mean, that's what people are asking. So you gotta come up with a way to try it to see if it works or get it.
Overwhelmingly asking, particularly as a hiring process of getting certain people in the door because they are just now used to having those options since COVID. So that really, I think, put us at a place to try to consider it. We sort of piloted with HR and to see how it works. It is, it's a third of the departments. It's not, it doesn't work for everybody in a municipality, clearly. I mean, it just, we're not set up that way from a public safety standpoint. Parks and Recreation, some, it's just, we didn't even consider it. But for those kind of, a lot of back office functions where it could work, it's been working very well. And I don't, I haven't sensed there's a gap with any of the socialization. But the caveat is it stops. If, I mean, the reason it works is because there's a clear expectation that there should be zero difference in service delivery, which is, which is what the expectation was during COVID. So we stood it up during COVID and demonstrated us that we could do it. We stopped it and then there was this sort of sense of, you know, I, I sort of like that opportunity if we could figure out how to make it work as a city.
What is the core hours that everybody is expected to work, right? Especially customer facing or people facing, you know, is it eight to five? Is it nine to five? Like if someone was, were to call someone working remotely, are their phones forwarded to their cell phone? Like I'm trying to understand and I'm somebody that does work remotely for my full-time job. So I know it can work if you have the right technologies in place. I don't, my only concern would be that people that are trying to engage with the city miss out because someone's working from home.
So we don't have that problem because we have the office managed. And as it relates to the, the social aspect, every Wednesday, everyone's in the office. So I misspoke earlier. If you work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then a different group works Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So every Wednesday, everybody's in the office. So those are the days that we have departmental meetings and, and, and we engage in any activity that would involve every single person. But to your point about the phone calls, a phone calls go directly to the computers, to the laptops. And they were able to answer the phones as if they were sitting right at their desks.
One, one of the things that y'all talked about too was some of the hiring was, was some part-time with flex. Like, you know, people, talented folks who may have retired or have, you know, child constraints. Have we, have we, have you tried any of that yet?
We haven't, well, you know, we, we are interested in making sure that we have all of our positions filled. And whatever comes to us, we consider it. So there's nothing that's really off the table in terms of that. We just haven't had the need to do, do, do that at this particular time. As, as it relates to accountability, we have ground rules and a lot of them have ground rules. I shared my ground rules with the whole entire city. In my department, they cannot switch days. You know, if, if this is your week to be off Monday, to be in the office Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and you can't be there on a Friday, you're not going to switch with someone else and have them come in because it messes up the rotation and it causes the employees to feel pressure from their colleagues. So we don't have that. We don't, they have to respond to me within 15 minutes of a text or an email. Because they know if I'm emailing them and asking them something, then I'm really needing that back. I have had one person get one minute to that 15 minutes, but it's almost immediate. It's almost as if they are, it's almost quicker than going to them in the office. So it's worked really, really, really well and that's what I'm hearing.
I'm curious too, how has it affected sick day usage and other stuff with the flex? Has that, you seen a reduction in that?
You know, I'll have to do the stats on that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll have to do the stats on that. I would, I would assume that it would have a positive effect on it, but I can't say for sure.
Do we know how many people do the four 10?
I wanted, yeah, I wanted, I hate Henry's not in here because I think he has the best, one of the best examples. Isn't it, is it support services who's, who's?
Four 10s.
Love it.
I would like to get feedback on that too. And one of the things that, you know, we're having to deal with as well, going back to the mayor's point about remote workers is, you know, we were having to make people take time off. Because a lot of remote workers, I mean, this is, I mean, I can show you on, yeah. I'm working from home today. I've got two sick kids, taking my mom to the doctor. I gotta pick up dinner for someone, blah, 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 blah. I'll be, I'm here.
That's not working remote.
Yeah, we're working from home. What are you talking about? That's a whole week's worth of stuff for me, but we're going to do it today. So, so I mean, I, I think, you know, we're having to put some real guidelines around.
Right.
Working from home. And you can't work from the doctor's office.
Right.
I actually got one the other day. I'm working from the airport. Okay, so I was like, well, that's a new one. That's a first that I'm working from the airport today.
Oh, I had one that was working out of country. I said, no, you're not. When you're out of the country.
I had, I had somebody that was working from California because her daughter, her daughter was sick.
Working remote.
That's out. That's out. You can't work from California while you're taking care of your sick daughter. That's out.
Right.
So we're having to get more, so I'm, I'm assuming you'll have to do.
Well, we've, we've dealt with that in our guidelines because they know that working from home means just that. And that I'm not to call and hear a baby in the background or Starbucks or some, you know, library. Exactly. Where you're working from home. They know that, they know they can't take lunch at three o'clock. You know, lunch has to be between 12 and two. They can't be in, in Belk at 2:30.
Working, you can't work from Belk.
Is this just your department? Has this been adopted by others as well?
This has definitely been adopted by others. We've had lots of conversations surrounding this before it went into implementation back in August. And things seem to be going really, really well.
Okay.
And I understand you said that the policy can be revoked by the department.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you're a new employee, you don't get to do it until you've been an employee for up to six months. You have to be an employee for six months before you can work remote.
I think it's also important because I think a lot of people feel an extra pressure because they're working from home. So, so I don't think most people are like, I got a day off. You know, it's like, I mean, you gotta hurt back and just take the day off. We give you time off. And I think you have to stress, we give you time off. Take it. Okay, you don't have to work from home today.
I think what I like about this is that it's structured, that it's not, I'm just going to change my schedule every week to fit. And I think that's the big difference in this and the rotation so that everybody is in tune and you know how to plan.
Right.
You know, that to me gives me so much more comfort from, from exactly what you're talking about is that, you know, I, I know I gotta work these days and this is what I gotta do. I can plan ahead, but you're right.
I will share with you that our receptionist can't work at home.
Yeah, right.
She's the only one of the 14 of us who cannot work at home.
I promise you, Ms. Doris can't work from home.
And you know, every, every department has one or two that just can't do it, even though the department may have gone to that schedule. But you just explain to the employee and it's just the nature of their job. And she's handled it very, very well.
It'd be great to know the numbers behind who's in what, what program, you know, across the city.
Yeah, okay.
And I would, going back to, I think it was the mayor's point, I would like to get some feedback on the four, the four 10s.
Can you?
That looks like a setup Denise.
Good morning. Our support services team has been working the 10 hour schedule and it is really worked wonders. From the standpoint, they're able to get more work done earlier in the morning, but also late in the afternoon when there's not a lot of activity. So project related items, they're able to kind of work through the evening time, whether it be in a facility, parking garage. So that, that's worked really, really well and it's been a great morale booster as well, so.
So is it always, what, what, is everybody on a different schedule? So is it like, in other words, or is it Friday, you know, like somebody's works Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
It's a rotation.
It's a, everybody's on a rotation?
Yes, yes.
So it's like a, it's like the old seven day shift work except you only work.
Right, and it, it really has worked, worked very, very well for that team, especially late in the evening. So we, we are very appreciative of that recommendation, so.
It's good, not just the days, but the timing of the day during the day, does that change too?
Right, right, right.
I'm curious to know too, it'd be great to look at how, how this is held with recruitment. How we could, we could track that this has made a difference for us to get talent. And I think as the program continues to grow, I think we ought to track that. Because that may dictate how you recruit in the future. You know, kind of like the messaging we talked about early on is, you know, free parking downtown, access to 55 restaurants at lunch, you know, hey, how about four 10s, you know, or three in the office? And that may become our recruiting tool, how we message that, especially if we know it's working.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, it's been working on that end because we are 100% full staffing in support services.
That wasn't the case before.
That wasn't the case before.
So as, as to that point, I think it's a good point. It is, it is hard in today's world to get people to want to work. I mean, we used to have people dying to work overtime. And now, I mean, if somebody work overtime, you think you're asking to go kill somebody. They just won't do it. So you see other areas of the city going to four 10s or is that not reasonable?
Do you know which areas? We already know.
I have that information, but I didn't put it in, in here. I could, I might be able to find it in my emails and provide that to you at a later time. But I can let you know. I know, I have a breakdown.
Okay, that'd be great if you could say that.
Jeff, you had something you wanted to add? Good. We did, okay, all right.
On the four 10s? I was a little surprised at a couple of my divisions that I thought would want to do it. It does not, because it kind of depends upon the makeup of your staff, age. If you have children, you might not want to be coming in early or staying late. And I'm actually surprised at how many people turn it down and are just still working the regular five days. But it's good to be offered out there to them, but I was a little surprised at several that didn't take advantage of it. Because I love four 10s. So it's interesting though, because I, we have different people in our company doing it. So for a lot of managers though, if, if the world's not working four-ten's, you're not working four-ten either. So, so if you're, you know, if you're, if you're managing a customer or something.
Yeah.
And, well, I'm off every Friday, well, no, you're not. You may think you're off, but you're gonna have to answer your, you know, you're gonna have to deal with stuff if it comes up. So I think that's smart for a lot of people to realize that that's not true. And other people, you know, like our design group.
Yeah.
If they work four-ten's, they work four-ten.
Yeah.
That's it.
And the back of the office functions that Jeff oversees are quite different than the operational functions that Henry oversees.
Exactly.
So it makes plenty of sense for them and maybe for some of the reasons.
We had a lot more three-two, but I would even say that each department, depending on what's going on, I won't say it's revoked, but like during audit, finance is all and accounting, there's several months where they may be in the entire week in the middle of an audit going on. Same with IT, um, if they're in the middle of an upgrade, something like that, they may be in the office. You know, if their normal day out was Tuesday, it might be, they, they're, they're not allowed to rotate to another day, that's just the way it is. But everyone's accepted that, um, because previously we didn't have it at all. So we have, I, I'm gonna have to, to, uh, say that the testing of it that HR did for six months beforehand helped lay a lot of ground rules to see things that would be effective and how we're going to introduce this to our employees. 'Cause, you know, Dr. No here was probably a little cynical in the whole thing. Um, but, but I, but I, I, I have to tell y'all, I have been very impressed. I don't need, with HR in and out, because the work is still getting done. That was one of the things that we really wanted out, that can't, you cannot sacrifice our, um, what we're currently doing, whether it's internal or with the external customer.
Well, all great feedback, thank you. Uh, we are clearly not at thirty minutes, we're at an hour, so we're gonna start picking up the pace just a little bit. But this is all great information.
This is my last slide too, so it'll be, well, actually no, but it's my last, it's, it's the last thing. Yeah. Evaluation, so, um, Mayor, you brought up earlier, you wanted me to review what this process looks like. And, um, this has been great and wonderful because the, where I come from in education, you had several different steps to an evaluation process, and one was called orientation. And so this is kind of modeled after what I'm used to implementing as a, as a principal, um, when I was, um, in education. The first step of our new process is the, um, orientation process. This is the time that management meets with their employees to discuss their evaluation. They are, um, spoken to about the competencies, they're spoken to about their expectations, and they, there's a checklist that's provided to them of everything that needs to be covered during that particular meeting. That checklist is, um, um, gone through by all of the, the managing, um, evaluators, and it's signed off on by the manager and the employee and dated at the end. Then there's a step called the mid-year evaluation. And this mid-year evaluation is placed strategically before the self-evaluation. The mid-year evaluation is a time where you can talk with the, where the manager talks with the employee to discuss how things are going. And at this particular time, if things are not going well, um, we help them create a improvement plan for that particular employee. There to let them know whether they're meeting expectation, whether they're making great progress toward those, um, competencies that are put into place. And then there's the self-evaluation, and in the past, this particular step, um, we would, I would see those that were clueless about what I thought about their performance, right? Some may think they're doing a lot better than I think, some may think they're doing a lot worse than I think. But because we had that mid-year engagement, I'm expecting this year for us to be on par, um, with, with that self-evaluation, yeah.
So this was always my concern. Are we still doing one-to-five scale with three being meets? Okay, 'cause when I used to evaluate, you got a three.
Right.
Most of y'all would just about doing your job.
Right.
Um, but they were used to being vibes.
Right.
They complained, so what's the scale? Oh, is that part of this?
So it's does-not-meets, meets and exceeds. And there are specific, um, okay, the, 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 the specific, yeah, measures for, you know, they have to be measurable. There, we call them the smart objectives. So it tells you exactly what you need to do, how many of each of those things you need to do, or how often you need to do it, so they know how, um, they're doing, what that means, right? They can look and say, okay, I wanna be, I wanna be exceeds, so this is where I'm looking for every single, um, every single evaluation.
The orientation that we then used to do before is that opportunity to dialogue with the employee, to hear from them too on what they want to do to meet or exceed, or I feel like I need more training and blah, blah, blah.
Exactly what that looks like. You know, I have one person in my department who does exceptionally well. She was losing sleep over this evaluation. So she was like, what, you know, I just, I'm just losing sleep, I don't know what to do. And I was like, let's sit down and talk about it, you know? This is very specific, what is it that you don't understand? Here it goes, right here. And we're reading through, and so she's like, oh, okay. So, you know, those high flyers, they wanna do really well and they wanna know exactly how they're gonna get there. So after the, um, self-evaluation step, there's a manager review, um, there's an indirect manager review. And the manager review is simply to look at what's been placed there, look at what I've done, look at what the employee has done. And then Pam, as the indirect review for my people, um, would take a look and she would sign off. And then there's an overall sign-off on the manager, for the manager and the employee. And the very next step is to plan for next year. We had a whole.
This was in the top five requests from employees.
This was, yeah, because they, for some reason, didn't know that they were being evaluated.
One-hundred percent, and I met with every hourly employee throughout the city, and this was in the top five of everything that they, they wanted, an opportunity to have a, a path forward. They wanted to understand, they're like, well, we don't get evaluated. Well, we were doing evaluations, they just didn't know they were being evaluated.
Right, well, this.
I think this is, I think this is fantastic, and I think this is, this is what will make us have a stronger, better workforce.
Right, because now they're involved and they get to have conversation, and you get to know them.
Well, and it also rewards the folks who actually want to do better.
Right.
And, you know, that was one of the complaints is, is y'all just do across-the-board raises and merits and however, but not all of us are pulling the same weight. This gives everybody an opportunity.
Right.
And you add this to the training programs, the opportunities for, for all the, the, the growth patterns, the leadership. This, this is what's gonna make us have a workforce, a strong workforce for the future.
Yes, I agree. Next, next slide. So we've completed two steps so far. We've completed the orientation task, and as you can see from this slide, we've had, we had ninety-three point one percent increase, uh, not increase, I'm sorry, overall progress on, on this particular, um, task. And the six percent, the six-point-nine percent, it's made up of people who might be on some type leave, um, whether it's military leave, family medical leave, might be on workers' comp. But we're very proud of that overall progress because then we know, like you said to your point, Mayor, that our employees are involved in this process. And the very next, um, the next slide, the mid-year engagement task, we are at about eighty-eight point three, um, percent increase. I mean, I didn't, I don't wanna say increase there, overall progress there, um, in completing that particular task. And the same for the, for the percent of, of incomplete there, leave cases and things of that nature.
What you gotta do to get to a hundred?
Well, you can't get to a hundred if they're not here. And so, you know, we have people who are not here during that particular time, and then they, now, we, we're able to come back to them once they come back. Um, but for this particular task, during these particular dates, where we had to, you know, in our system, we had to put a date to, to finish it so that we can get on to the next task. Um, but they're not necessarily gonna be left out of the loop in terms of the merit that will come, come in September.
How, how many people do we have on, on longer-term leave right now? Do you know, I'm curious, between military leave and others?
I don't know, I am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, it would be a guess, but I would say maybe two-fifty. I mean, and that's, that's a guess.
That's, that's, that's a lot. That's twelve or fourteen percent of workforce, that seems very high.
Yeah.
That doesn't include injured workers, does it?
It would include workers' comp.
It does, workers' comp.
But those guys who are out there lifting pipes and stuff like that, that shouldn't pull our numbers down. We could, can we take that out? So doesn't, when you're looking at the numbers, if somebody got hurt, for example, working on the water line.
Mm-hmm.
And they're being graded as being out of work, not negatively affecting their evaluation. Can we make sure that's not hurting workers?
It absolutely will not, yeah. Are there any questions? They spent some great questions.
I'd be interested for us to review that, if that number is that high. That seems awfully high.
Our military leave numbers would be higher than, is, is higher than you think. And we get, and there is no play with that from the federal government, you just, you don't.
And they're looking at going from fifteen to thirty days for military leave now.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be good just to look at, understand it.
Any other questions?
Starting to leave as well?
I'm sorry?
Starting to leave?
Yeah.
Starting to leave? It's all in that number.
So, you know, these are all important because when you, you put that on top of how sick leave is done and other stuff and vacation, you're constantly bad.
Our next related item is the management. I wanted to give you all a quick update on where we are with that. This Pamela Benjamin, Assistant City Manager for Administrative Services, and Ms. Missy Kaufman, Budget and Program Management and Grants Director.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to present this information. We've, we got a great team and we've been working really hard, and it's good to, to recognize, um, all the hard work. I wanted to take a moment just to thank everybody for their recent support for me. My niece passed away about two weeks ago, and, um, everybody was so kind, whether it was Chief or Ms. Wilson with food. Um, her husband happens to be a Rookie of the Year Police Officer, and so the North Region was very kind to bring food every day. And from your text messages, um, uh, Mayor recommend to everybody bringing me flowers and, and all kind of good treats and hugs and texts and, and warm wishes and prayers. So I, I just wanna take a moment to say that, I appreciate that. And one of the things that makes a place, a place that, an employer that retains people is how you treat your people. And so the City of Columbia is definitely a family, like Bacon said when he did his little presentation. It's definitely a family and they rally around you and support you when you're having tough times and when you're having good times. So I just wanted to take a moment to, to say thank you for that, um, because that mean, that meant a lot to me and my family. So, um, like Ms. Wilson said, we are currently in the process of working with a, um, consultant. And I'm gonna skip this slide real quick and I'm gonna come back to it. So we're working with Matrix Consulting Group, and we went through a procurement process to, um, to pick Matrix. Um, they're a consulting firm that is out of California. They have offices in, in Oregon, Illinois, and one in Charlotte, North Carolina. And one of the reasons why we picked them was because they have done hundreds of management and organizational assessments for local governments. And their staff consists of a lot of prior municipal employees. They've got prior clerks, they've got prior, um, police chiefs, prior city administrators, um, pub, public works directors. And so they have a good feel for the type of work that we do, which makes them a really great consultant to work with us because they do understand, um, municipal government in its entirety. And so what we've done so far, we've been engaged with them for several months now. But their task one that they have, um, started working on is evaluating the effectiveness of the current organizational and management structure to determine the basic requirements for personnel and determine where the span of control and management staffing levels throughout the organization are appropriate to support timely, effective and efficient delivery of service to the public, um, as well as internal prop, internal operations, proper internal operations. So what they've been doing is doing a current state assessment of operational practices, organizational structure, resources and staff and allocations. And they're working on an interim report that's gonna outline the current state assessment. So they've reached out to all of our departments and they've met with each department, and they've done a series of interviews and questionnaires to make sure that they are understanding our structure. They've gotten org charts, they've gotten, um, budgets, they've gotten, um, a lot of staffing allocation. They've been, we've shared with them the assessment the Police Department has, had done, and also the assessment that the Fire Department had done in order for them to get some good information. And I'm just giving you a few of the data points that they have received. But there's a whole list, laundry list of data they've requested. And so we're providing that data to them. They've done all the departmental, um, interviews and meetings. And, um, they're looking to do an assessment draft, um, in February. And one of the things that they are considering in their assessment is also employee engagement. And they are, um, gonna partner in with us, and I'll see if I can go back, to do an employee engagement survey. So that employee engagement survey was sent out and is being administered. It started January twenty-ninth through February eleventh. And it's not only asking for engagement questions. Do you like your job? What do you find satisfying about your job, those type things? But it's also asking organizational effectiveness type questions. Do you have the equipment that you need? What type of technology do you think will help you do your job better? Um, do you feel like you can make decisions? Um, do you feel like your manager is responsive to you? So those type of questions that dig into the organizational effectiveness of each of our areas is also in this employee engagement survey.
Man, we couldn't have done this, you know, and had a benchmark to go against because of all the changes that have been implemented. You know, I mean, we've made massive investments in the last two years in technology, equipment, in our employees, into our infrastructure within the city. It would've been great to see the difference.
Before and after, kind of.
But it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be very important for us to be able to see moving forward because we, because of the commitment we've made.
Exactly.
That would've been, that would've been unbelievable to see that.
It would've been.
I think, at least what I hear when I'm out there, the employees feel much more engaged with, with the city, um, right now and feel like we're investing. Obviously, we can always improve, and so that's why we wanna do this, but this, I, I, I can't wait to see the results.
And it.
Still tease it out, I think, the data, especially for longer-term employees, I think it'll still be relevant.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, you know, this is how we, this is how we improve by hearing folks that are in the trenches day to day.
And it's asking, definitely asking demographic information as well, so we can see kind of the things that, um, help us retain some of our younger employees, um, as opposed to some people that have worked here longer. Um, and the goal really is that we're gonna take the results and make some engagement, just employee engagement decisions. We're gonna figure out things that our employees are asking for, things that will make them feel, you know, more valuable, enjoy their work more, but that's the, the foundation and the framework to start that process. So we are pushing, I'm giving a plug for it right now. Everybody who hasn't done your survey, please do your survey, 'cause it's really important and we really need the information. You know, you, you have to have about seventy percent participation.
We're not included.
You're not included for, in order for it to be, um, you know, really effective. So we're really pushing because they really need the information.
Is it something we can do to help encourage people to, to do that?
We got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
I think we got it, and we are, you know.
Seventy percent is pretty high, right?
Right now, you think it's pretty high?
Seventy percent is high, but that, you know, that's the target.
But I mean, to get it a little higher would be great, or maybe seeing if all the departments are represented in that without it being identifiable, yeah.
Yes, Dr. Bustles, you're absolutely right. We're definitely trying to make sure that all departments are represented.
Gotta have a cross-section of.
Yeah, 'cause that makes a big difference. Um, and, and also, so they, they, we're really working hard on that part. They're gonna take the.
They're gonna take the information that they've, that they've received. And they're also gonna help us benchmark ourselves against other similar cities. We are certainly gonna provide them with some of the benchmarking organizations that we use for pay and for other things. But they're also gonna come back to us as experts in this field and say, yeah, you guys are kind of similar to, and I'm throwing out something, I don't know if this is, but, but a, a Waco or somewhere else that has a utility is structured similar to us and based on their assessment would be a good benchmarking organization.
Are they included in your layout and planning for fourteen oh one?
That's a good point. Well, we, we certainly were gonna take.
Are they gonna be included in, in the planning of fourteen oh one? Because when you, when you read in here and you talk about organizational and this and that, the flow of how information departments interact with each other, I'm assuming they're taking all of that information. And as we're getting ready to merge folks into fourteen oh one, I'm just curious if, if, if some of that is being included in that and they're, they're giving their input to you to say, hey, have you thought about this? Not from a construction standpoint, but a placement standpoint, does that make sense?
We certainly can integrate this information as we get these reports with what you'll hear later on today as far as the layout. That's kind of done. But we'll, but I think we still have the opportunity to maybe integrate the feedback.
Yeah, you, this, they'll make the right decision. I mean, it's a major investment for us and it's a smart one, but it's a major investment.
And you'll hear later that, yeah, we'll talk about it later, but that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense. They can validate some of the, some of the decisions that you've already made about, you know, open spaces or not open spaces or where we have opportunities to serve our customers a little bit more effectively. So, so that's important. So after this, after the, you know, February, March timeframe, then if they're, and they do that assessment, if there are some things that we feel like need a deeper dive, we certainly can do that at that time and, and consider some more specific targeted assessments if that, if the, if the report gleams that that's necessary. So that's, you know, that's in their scope of work. That's a potential phase two. And so we, we definitely will be looking for that opportunity if it presents itself. Is there any questions about that? I think it's, it's, like I said, it's been really good. They've gotten some really good information from our departments. Because I know like, like Erica, for example, they had a person who was a former clerk who taught to her. And so they had some, you know, kind of knowledge to ask the right questions and kind of dig deeper to make sure that they're getting a good assessment of what she does in her office. And, you know, police people talk to, to the police department. And so there's that, that, that makes those connections and that makes that a, a really good assessment because they know what they're talking about. You don't have to re-educate them because they're talking about something that they have no knowledge about. So that's, that's, that was really important to us when we, when we chose Matrix. Miss, you have any comments you wanna add to that? Yes, we have made a very conscious effort to make sure that we made departments know how important this was and how valuable their feedback is, so that this assessment is as good as it can be. Yes.
Then you can't deliver a good product.
Right. And we've really tried to emphasize that, that we need you, we need your feedback, we need you to participate. And we're asking everybody we can for their involvement in the process.
The Matrix has made it very easy. They're not, they've been easy to work with in the sense that they've.
They've been to this rodeo before.
Yeah.
And they also, you know, they know how to blend what, what they're asking for and all the data that they're asking, want to do their work, so.
Yeah. And they've given good suggestions of, you know, maybe you should try, do the survey this way and maybe you, so it's been good, it's been good.
No one's survey fatigue, right? So they're very into, hopefully, we can make sure our folks are being, wanna respond.
And they're doing some, on the ground, obviously, interviews and so forth and assessments.
Yes.
That's great.
Any questions? Any? Nope. So one of the things that's really helping us, like Denise talked about with the school districts, trying to get people interested in municipal government is a big thing. And so one of the ways we're doing that is what Ms. Ash is gonna talk about next. And, and with Mr., Mr. Councilman Brown's encouragement and Dr. Bustles, we're, we're starting, and the mayor's talking about internships a lot too, is trying to really appeal to these younger generation and figure out why won't they come work for us and what would draw them in. And so, uh, Ash is gonna talk about the Institute of Local Government Interns and, and kicking that off. And I will turn it over to her.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good morning. We're excited to provide a brief update about the City of Columbia Institute of Local Government Interns and a lot of the work we've accomplished over the past few months. Oh, got it. Got it. Oh, I got it. Okay, great. So the City of Columbia Institute of Local Government Interns Program provides a unique opportunity for undergraduate and graduate students with an interest in local government and graduate, and to be immersed in local government. So basically, they're learning a lot about the day-to-day operations of the city, what's required to run and maintain municipality and services. The program was created, as ACM Benjamin said, the desire of Councilman Peter Brown and City Council in order to foster a relationship between local government and our local colleges and universities with an emphasis on community-based projects. So just a few fast facts about the institute. The institute was obviously created for undergraduate and graduate students. It was initially offered spring and fall, but with a lot of the requests that have been coming in from departments, we're considering summer as well. It's a paid internship. Students are receiving academic, non-academic credit. Some are also receiving experience. The interns perform a variety of tasks that include policy research, development, drafting memoranda, community engagement, outreach and education, administrative task, research and analysis, with an emphasis on each intern being assigned a city council project to research and provide a final project report on the subject matter. We've been working on this for latter part of twenty twenty-three, after meeting with Councilman Brown and some city council members as well. It's been a great effort. We're partnering with USC as well as for the first cohort that started this spring, January twelfth. And then we've also received some applications from outside students that weren't involved or don't go to USC as well. And they're incorporated in some of the stats that I'll show after this slide. But this is the list of, of possible projects that some of the interns are being decided, assigned based on their department area and what they feel that they are, are good at researching. These were provided by Councilman Brown and there are some additional items that have also been provided by other city council members. Just a spring twenty twenty-four at a glance. We have nine students, which includes a seven from the initial cohort and two additional students that are now interned with Public Relations. Six departments are included, so let me actually go ahead and bring those up for you. The departments that are participating are Office of the Mayor and City Council, Economic Development, Columbia Empowerment Zone, Inc., Office of Business Opportunities, Office of Violent Crime Prevention, and Public Relations. We have eight undergraduate students and one graduate student. The students represent four different majors from Political Science to Mass Communications, to Criminal Justice majors. Five cities are represented and two states, from South Carolina and then also New York. And three colleges and universities, University of South Carolina, Benedict College, and Columbia International University. And this is just for the first group of interns.
Now, is that the new Hope Sign or the old Hope Sign?
It was the new one.
It's a new one. Most important thing.
It is the one that's currently on Main Street.
Currently on Main Street, so it's the new one. That's the new one.
Looks like the new one.
Yes, we wanted to get all the great angles.
Of course, it's the new one.
I know, yeah. The old one, the old one's gonna try to dust eventually anyways. Ashley, what's the ratio breakdown for students? Are five of them at USC, one at Benedict, one at Columbia?
Yeah, so we wanted to start with a smaller group. And actually, in the process, we've gotten additional contacts with other universities from Benedict to Allen and so on and so forth. So for the breakdown, there are.
Graduate students.
The graduate student is from Columbia International University.
Very sharp kid.
Right. Six of the students are from University of South Carolina. And then two are from, from Benedict College and they're actually in Public Relations. But a couple of the department heads and also have sent us contacts for other schools as well. We just wanted to do a soft launch and we've definitely been, we'll be working with other colleges and universities, not just USC. And the students that applied from Columbia International University and Benedict applied through, not through the partnership with the class, the classes of Public Relations Internship through Professor Dr. Meyer Gutberg at USC. But we had additional applicants outside of that class that were also considered and they've been placed in these departments. So it's been great.
Benedict students are very.
Overall goal of, I mean, I know we don't only do hundreds and thousands, but. No, because it, because it does take work to, to have them have show folks new things and, but do we have a goal of how many we want or targeted departments so we think it will be well?
First of all, the mayor's.
Yeah. This is gonna be a good indication of what, you know, we can handle. Because you're exactly right, Councilwoman Herbert and, you know, the former teacher of me too. It's very important that we wanna have them, but they need to have a good experience while they're with us. And they need to be attended to and we need to be receiving their feedback as well. Kinda can't do that if you start getting too, too many. Not to mention with this cohort, they do have, some of them are ha, are in the class that goes with it with the professor. So some of it's been informed by what the professors class can handle in this particular cohort, I would imagine.
Yes.
And then we wanna also make sure that we are, these are paid internships. So we kinda softly rolled into this, but we wanna plan through the budgetary process as well with our departments because we wanna keep paying the interns if we can, but we need to budget accordingly for that, so.
And we're checking with the departments throughout the internship as well as the students. Initially, they filled out a survey so we could get their feedback and we'll be doing that periodically throughout the semester as well.
Figure out, probably call the president's office or Rebecca. I think these students will qualify for the matching intern funding. You know, there's a million dollars a year put away.
At USC.
Yep, to three, three thousand dollars.
Yep.
Nice.
For those interns added funding.
And they also, if they're out of state, working for the city can qualify them in, as a GA ship for in-state tuition. So that might be something we can do. One thing I was gonna suggest, which would be nice and was really important when I was in school, is if, whatever project they have, if they can come present to the committee about it.
Yes.
I mean, for us to be able to give kind of like real-time feedback and ask questions, to get a taste of, you know, what it's like when city professionals come and, and talk about a topic or idea. So I think planning for that would be really great over the next, you know, towards the summer or whatever makes sense.
Absolutely.
We'll grill them really.
Additionally, their day-to-day is spent in their department, the departments we specified. But we're also working on additional activities like legislative reception, attending city council amenities, community opportunities so that they get a well-rounded focus and site tours to each department. So that's something that we tested out with our Leadership Columbia class, Leadership South Carolina class, as well as our Harvard fellows that we had last year. And it worked fairly well, them getting to be exposed to different departments, learn about those departments, particularly Columbia Water and Public Relation, Public Works and Economic Development all did tours for those students and it was, it was a hit.
Put in there a requirement moving forward where they have a little checklist like, have you been, in, in, been part of Soda City? Have you seen the riverfront?
Oh, that's good.
Have you been to our different parks? Have you seen, you know, the different areas of town? Have you visited all four districts? Do you understand?
Got it.
Because I think a lot of the projects that we wanna do is improving the city as a whole, so that they have a better geographic feel too. You know, kind of a mini capture, if you wanna call it.
I know Peyton and I had discussed that briefly about potentially getting them in on that tour.
You don't have to duplicate the wheel there. I knew Soda City blog and there's like a hundred things to do before you die in Soda City.
Okay.
You can build on that.
Okay.
Or like swap things that make sense for the city, like the four districts or something like that.
That's great.
That way you're not sitting there trying to figure out, what should I put on this list? Yeah.
That's good. Thank you for that. I will definitely look, we'll look at those.
Well, I just wanna say congratulations. This is, you guys really pulled this together a lot faster than I thought you could pull it together. And I think it, it, to me, you know, it could serve as a real model for, for a lot of cities and for the universities to hopefully become more involved in the community as well, which is one of the goals, I think, of, of the city council and our staff is to, is to have better relationships, better working relationships, not just better relationships, better working relationships with the universities.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. It's definitely been a group effort and we're thankful for the positive feedback.
I'll tell you, with the college committee on engagement, the universities, you know, Columbia College, Benedict, Allen are, are mu, having a much stronger push to get their students to get more engaged in the community and we're seeing that. We're hearing it from the kids, which was part of why we weren't retaining some of these folks here because they didn't really know what the opportunities were.
They didn't even think about it. How about that? Forget knowing about it. They didn't even think about it.
And we found out from that, one of the biggest pieces there is living. Living is how they're making choices. They wanna live in an area that they can, they can move freely, walking everywhere. And so, I mean, our call for downtown living is more important today than it's ever been if we wanna retain that, that future talent.
Good internship program too.
Yep. Well, it was, it was amazing. We had the advocacy council over here the other day from USC and this is all under undergrads, juniors to freshmen. And, you know, they were talking about, you know, I hope y'all will look at, you know, we walk from Main Street, the lighting, but over by the State House is not, there's not enough blue light, you know, canisters in between here and there. Not that we think we need it, but having that safety net there and the lighting upgrades, you know, is there things we could do to make it brighter? Rent control, which was very interesting because some of them said some of the rent is getting out. Of controlling is making it harder for them to continue on because there's limited opportunities on campus. There are things to think about as we are approving future growth, how that plays into it.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ash.
Anyone need a break?
I could use a five minute.
Yeah, he's about there.
How do we know they're working?
And I could, you can even get a little thing that jiggles your mouse. Like if you're an organization that keeps up with the mouse movements.
So for our design, our design folks, we, we, we track all their activity like that.
Say what?
Yeah, you can get a little thing that moves your mouse.
You don't touch something for ten minutes, you'll, someone will get notified.
Yeah.
You like send a shockwave or something?
No, no, just a, just an alert.
Yes, we're live. Live from New York. It's Saturday night.
It's Tuesday afternoon.
Okay. Let's keep going. Our customer relationship management platform update. Ms. Benjamin will give us the update along with the team who's been working on this, I'm sure, because I see Carmen in here too. And we know this has kind of been a long time in coming, so we're anxious for you all to come to give us some feedback. So hopefully we can begin to launch and go live.
Absolutely. So like Ms. Wilson said, this has definitely been a team effort. We have been engaged with the project management team, the IT department, and every single department within the city that's gonna provide some type of customer experience for our citizens and, and customers that use the services at the City of Columbia. So with the mayors and, and Dr. Bustles and encouragement, we, we were encouraged to go out and try to figure. and try to figure out a better way to engage with our citizens and the customers, to give them some platforms that will make it easier for them to.
And for us.
So they're going to track when we request something.
We went through a process. So I will say that, and now you're not working. Can you advance me, Erica? Because it's not working now. So based on this opportunity we had to refresh and enhance our citizen and customer experience, we had a few objectives for our project. The main ones were to improve our customer relationship management web and app presence that enables customers to submit and better track concerns and requests for enhanced, and that provided enhanced customer service, customer experience. Also enhance the transparency and communication with customers using our services. And we currently use CityWorks is a platform that we use in the backside of the system. That's where all the work orders go into. And so we were, we're trying to provide a little bit more transparency so that the customer, if they say, I got a water leak at my house, then we get that request in the CityWorks and then they get more information about the status of the repair. So they're able to see what's going on with their request. And so that's part of our goals for this project.
The customer will or just the employee?
So it'll be both. So the customer will be able to see a little bit more and the employee themselves.
That would reduce phone calls by 30, 40%.
And we, we hope so. And of course, you know, we, we will be, the people will see different things. You know, internally, people will see things, but then the customer will, will see other things.
When we say internally, so frustration point from a customer is I'm trying to call and track this down and the person I talked to at customer service can't look it up. That's, that's what we're hoping this will do is that they could punch in their work order. Now, they have to actually put a work order request in, obviously, which, you know, some people don't. They just call us. But when they do that, then they'll be able, that employee, no matter who it is or where they are, should be able to give them a status report, correct?
So that's what, yes, that's what we're working towards. So of course, it, it definitely makes a difference. It definitely matters that departments are engaged in this process as well. So that is part, we'll talk a little bit about that as well. So it's important that they're putting in the status of, of the work orders and they're entering in, you know, went to Elm Street this day at this time. And these are the activities that happen. And so all of that is what the system is offering us, is the ability to see those things as they, as they're happening. And we're working back office to make sure our workflows are in place, to make sure we're able to put the information in the system accurately and timely so that all these pieces are working together and communicating together. And that's what, that's the next one, to improve departmental workflows, staff collaboration to resolve customer issues. So where we have silos, where we don't communicate well, we're trying to work on that process as well. And then to utilize a shared platform for tracking and resolving constituent requests and issues. And I know you all as council members and you as the mayor, you all get requests from your constituents. And so we're going, we're working with Shanique and Erica and those of us who get those requests and are trying to fill those requests for you all to track them in this system as well. So it, it sometimes it's both, right? That customer has reached out to the water department. They haven't gotten.
Or they don't call at all. They just call us directly.
They call you directly.
That's a problem because it doesn't get in the system.
They usually, they usually spend two weeks getting really frustrated.
Right.
So, so.
So this will all mirror up together. So that same, you know, problem, you'll, we'll be able to see it in one centralized platform. So it won't be disjointed and then we can say, oh, okay, yes, you called yesterday and this is, this is the status of your complaint. And to give them, try to head off their complaints and provide information to them before they even ask for that information is what we're working on. So they don't even have to complain. We can automatically tell them what's going on. Because I think that's been a, that's been a struggle is making sure that we are communicating to our citizens and our customers. We're busy working, but we're not necessarily telling them what's the status, what's the timeframes.
To turn an invisible situation into a visible situation. A lot of times these situations are invisible because all it is is somebody complaining to everybody else and they're not going to get anything done because they're not talking to the right people.
Right.
So. Posting it on Facebook.
Yeah, right. It doesn't do any good. It's like yelling out your window. So, so a lot of this is just, is just getting the invisibility of our system visible. And, and the only way to do it is to have a number. So if you're, you're visible if you got a number and you're invisible if you ain't got a number.
Well, I think it, it really helps the employees who are dealing with the phone calls as well so that they can actually answer somebody. You know, half the time, it's not about that it took this long to get it. It's the fact that they know that it's coming and that it's in process. And, and, and I think we, we, we don't give our employees that, that tool. And, and, you know, I think this is going to be beneficial. I mean, you know, and I think, yes, this is some of the stuff that we got from some of the employees. And that discussion too is, is that I can't answer people's questions because we're not set up that way.
Well, all of these topics today relate to each other as I'm sitting here thinking about what y'all are saying. The touch points, the connectivity with customer service training, making sure we're integrating that.
Same thing now.
Yeah, it's the same, you know, they're going to also be able to use a piece of technology and a platform to help them be better ambassadors.
But wasn't technology and training solves a lot of problems.
This is Mary.
Yes, Mr. Reverend McDowell.
Mr. Reverend?
It doesn't matter. Pam, let me, let me ask one question. You remember a few years ago, we had an app that we instituted on our, on our, on our platform? And it was called City of Columbia, I think. Is that any different than what we're talking about now?
So Reverend McDowell, you are right on time. You can't hear me?
You, we're saying you are right on time. You are about, you're transitioning us into what Ms. Benjamin's about to talk about. You're exactly right.
So that.
All right, all right. That sounds good then. Let's transition into that.
So what Reverend McDowell is referring to is my South Carol, my Columbia SC. And my Columbia SC was a product, and we'll go into a little bit of background, that we did, that we had and still have, actually. And so when we were going through the process of trying to figure out, how do we make this whole experience better? And what kind of platform we're going to use? We debated whether we refresh or whether we replace it. And so we did our due diligence to do some project discovery. We looked at the technology. We looked at what else was out there. We looked at what other communities were using. We did, we had some vendor meetings for the mayor's satisfaction. We, we definitely demoed C Click Fix. And we looked at a couple other platforms that are out there. And so we had to make a decision whether or not we wanted to kind of stay with what we had, but update and refresh it. Was that the best choice or was it to go with something totally complete, completely different? So Glove QA actually purchased, well, Granicus is who we were using before. They actually purchased a new platform, some new technology. And those things gave us a little bit more robust of a app and a, and a platform. So we, we thought we'll, and then the integration for CityWorks was there for the work order system. And so we felt like with the changes they had made and the updates, we, it would be better for us to just refresh and stay with the vendor that we had before. So we're using Granicus One View as our vendor for this new relaunch of, of this platform and the app.
And so just for clarity, because I think we were looking at different types of platforms, but the difficulty would then be trying to integrate it into the platform that we're currently using to put the data in.
Absolutely.
A lot more seamless.
Absolutely.
Explain that to people.
Absolutely. You got it completely.
Ms. Herbert, you're right. And, and part of what we found too is that people said they could integrate with us, but when it came down to the demo and others, they couldn't do it. We couldn't get. So there wasn't any reason to continue to chase that. And I think they found a good bridge gap to make that happen.
I, I found that this industry loves to tell you stuff that's not true.
Yeah. And our team, our IT team and our project management team with Carmen Fleming, who's going to come up a little bit, they were very insistent on proof of concept. Show us that you can do these things and, 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 and so we can see for ourselves because we're not here to listen to what you say you can do and then you can't do it. So we made sure that that proof of concept was, was there.
So is the idea, once the app is up and running, that we would all have like different levels of access to it? Like would we be able to on our phone check a constituent's request?
So yes, there will be different levels of access and what people can see. And, and so we'll, we'll work, we're working with the levels of, of staff to determine that and then to, to give them the access that they will need. So of course we'd have to do some training and you'd have to be able to, to access and we can talk through that.
Do you want low access?
So I'm going to.
You know, I was sitting here thinking, oh, I.
I can tell. He's just like, I don't, not one high actor.
Like that's what I've been doing the last ten minutes, just trying to get.
And nothing with this, it's the old school ways, picking up the phone and calling. So some people are just going to have analysis paralysis when looking at a CRM system and telling them, download the app. They can still just call the city.
Yeah.
Get a number.
Absolutely.
But I think the difference Tyler, for that is so important is that, that when that person calls, that the person on the other end can actually give them the information they're looking for. And I think that's part of it is, is sharing this integration. So we're not taking away, away from you to get that information. We're actually giving the employees so that, you know, if you've got an elderly person who's, who doesn't trust an app, can pick up the phone and call, but the customer rep on the other side could say, your work order is in progress. It's, you know, number whatever. It's going to be three weeks because pups got to come first. This has got to happen. And then two weeks after that, after they fix it, they'll pave it, you know, they can, that's the information there that people want to see. And I, I think now we just can't access it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all there. The pieces and parts are all there. It's just making sure they're, that we're pulling it all together. So like I said before, in 2010 is when the My Columbia SC, the Citizens Action Center web portal came about to support 311 and FOIA initiatives. And then in 2018, we tried to kind of refresh it and enhance it with an app, expand the services a little bit more. And so we, we did make some strides in improving it. But since then, and since then, there has been, you know, decent utilization. We have more than 20,000 customers, 27,000 CRM requests. And the, those requests are coming in, like you said, Councilman Bailey. If someone calls, the, the person at customer service can put that request into this web portal as well. So we're just going to build on these numbers. This is just showing you a snapshot of kind of what the, what the activity has been since then. But the hope is that we build on these numbers and we grow the use and the access and, and the, and the integration of, of this, this.
Is parking something that could be added to this?
As in terms of, in terms of parking, paying your bill?
Paying your bill if you have any questions about.
Broken meter.
Broken, yeah, like.
Some, some, some.
So definitely the, definitely reporting the broken meters, like you said, Mr. Brown. That could be a part of that. We are looking at connecting it with the other things we have, like the bill pay that we currently have. You would be able to connect to that from the app.
It would also be great if in the app, it said like, even if you had a parking section, it said, oh, and here's the link to the App Store to download the, what, I don't, what do we use? Not Park Mobile, whatever, Passport. So that people can easily figure that out from there too. Even if it can't integrate, at least they know, go there.
Maybe they have a button they just compress and it redirects it.
Yeah. Yeah. And we are definitely, that's a good idea. So we'll jot that down. We're looking for all, you know, we don't want to have the app be overloaded and the people say, oh my God, it's so complicated to get through the app. So we're, we're also thinking of ways to connect to different things like Passport, like the payment system in order for people to have access. So that's really important. I didn't, I forgot to mention that, you know, of course Clint and his group are the, are the major reasons why people are accessing the apps or the portals in the, in the past. I don't imagine that that'll change because of all the customers that he has. So that's a big, big one. Streets, Public Works, you know, if somebody needs a new roll cart, we're going to be able to connect them and say they can get a new roll cart. And these things are happening. They're just not happening as seamlessly and as, as effectively as we, as we hope to happen with the new app and platform.
I got some positive feedback from Fender in five points a couple of weeks ago, which I have not shared. Good news. The City of Columbia Business Licensing Division is pleased to announce the ability to renew licenses online using the statewide business license, some, some, some. Registered now to pay for the February 2024. The next comment was, what about hospitality tax? Being able to do that online. And I said, I'll look into it.
That's come up before. Isn't that going to make some integration with the county? Yeah.
That was pretty enthusiastic.
I got excited with that response.
Talk about institutionalized.
We're looking at a new platform with business license that, that's one of the main, that is one of the main items. Because it's not just hospitality tax, it's also tourism.
All right. So you're enthusiastically working on it. Passionately working.
Mr. Happy is on it.
Passionately working on it. Got it.
And I will say, I have had one person to use the app.
The current.
And it gave me good response at a, at a neighborhood meeting. So when you use it, the folks who are using it, I feel are having a good experience.
And again, and Carmen can speak to some of the technology and, and Ms. Sylvia, you know, some of the like geo fencing. You, you, you weren't able to do some of, some of that kind of tech, kind of features. Some of the other features didn't work. But this is the, this is what the app and the website look like now. And then this is what is a mock-up of what it's going to look. And we, we have consulted with Crawford and that's working on the marketing. So we've gotten some photos and some ideas from them. So this might not be what it completely looks like, but this is what we're going to roll out because it has kind of the, the, the.
I like it.
The look that they're, they're encouraging us to go to. And so because of timing, we went ahead and asked them for their assistance. This was one of the photos that they recommended to us. And so that's what we're going to use. And, and, and Cola, we're, we're changing it just a little bit to My Cola SC instead of My Columbia SC. Again, to give it a new feel, a new look, a new, new, new.
When it comes to the key buttons that will be kind of the ones that stick up like they're showing there, will that be done by base what we think the most requested things are?
Yes. So we talked about that. We talked about, there's a potential and Carmen's going to give her demo in a minute. There's a potential of about nine buttons. And we looked at other communities like Dublin, Ohio and Waco, Texas. And there, a, a community in Florida, and we kind of tried to look at how they set theirs up. We found that the, the more buttons, the more confusing it gets. And so we're trying to narrow it down to, because you can do nine buttons. So we're trying to do less than that, but then put links at the bottom so people can link to other things. So we're just trying to.
Simple, you make it.
So, yeah, that's what we're trying to focus on. But yes, the, the, we have had days and days of discussions about what's the most frequent. We have had days and days of discussions about what's the most frequent things people will wanna do. And so those are the buttons that we're...
Email I get, because when we have a fifth week in a month, it throws off my recycling. I don't know what to do until that comes across my email and tells me to put it out in recycling.
Just wanted to reiterate, on the 20th, you'll be getting lots of great feedback from Crawford. Can't wait for y'all to see some of this stuff. And it's looking really nice. I think that, I think this is similar, but it's still not what it's probably going to be. But they wanted to show you something because you're gonna get a color palette selection. And we got a lot of stuff to go through on that, but it's leaning into the direction they're going. Definitely the Cola, you're gonna see that again.
I like the way it stands out with the colors in it.
I'll even say Mr. Palin was leaning into the Cola part, so...
Yes, sir, Reverend McDowell.
Yes, Ms. Minniburn, let me ask you a hypothetical question. And the question is, we've heard about the real good things that this app brings to the table. What about those things that folk have not spoke real highly about? Some of those places and some of those departments, they've not, they've not, they've not entered into, into, into a conversation with the constituent about their particular problem. I guess what I wanna say is, I understand that there are some good things. But what about the bad things? And how do you detect those things? And how do you weed out those things out of this app?
Can you give us an example?
Water. Water issue, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so what we were talking about earlier is that this would help us create access. So let's say a customer calls about a leak, that they'll be able to see the information about the call they made, and they got the work order, where it is in the progress. So we're trying to share more information through this app. This isn't just a reporting mechanism, it's also an informational mechanism. So people aren't always wondering what's going on.
I hope it's a collaborative application where not only, the issue, the issue has been persons creating a ticket, a water ticket, or some other ticket, and they've not been responded to. The city has not responded to the constituent. And the thing that bothers me is that tickets are created, but there has not been an accurate response to those tickets.
Yes, sir. And that's part of this as well. Reverend McDowell, we'll get, you know, some analytics that will show us, you know, it's data. So it's gonna show us the good, the bad, and the ugly. So we'll know, you know, if we need to increase our responsiveness. We'll know that we need to work on that. We'll know those areas that need improvement. And we're focused, as a group, we've met with all the stakeholders. We've had lots of individual meetings with departments to talk about the importance of this and how important it is for them to be timely and responsive and really put information in there. And I think a lot of times, people just want you to be honest with them and follow up. They just wanna know. And if they don't have information and they don't know, then that makes, that makes people aggravated and angry and displeased with their experience with the city. And so the goal is, is we have more touchpoints where we're reaching out to our customers, we're letting them know statuses, you know, before they even have to ask us, so they at least know that we're still working on your problem, you know, we know it's...
That's right.
Yes, sir. So that's part of our, the, our communication to the departments, is we need you to be responsive. We need you to, whether it's good or bad. Because I think a lot of times, people think, I'm just gonna respond when I'm done. And so we're trying to tell them, no, there needs to be different touchpoints throughout the process where you're responding, not just when the problem is complete, but what the status is all along. So people feel...
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that you would be able to get an email confirmation that has been processed? And that we could set it up where the client could actually push a function and say, I want an update as progress moves, or, you know, I want an update when it's finished. Because some people don't want that, and some people may. So I don't know if we can look at that and have, so somebody can ask for the frequency they want. Some people just wanna be informed all the time, some don't.
Like the text update?
Yeah. Yeah. We've definitely talked about kind of standardizing, you know, the timeliness of responses. So I don't know about the functionality of saying, you know, I only wanna be notified when it's finished. I don't wanna get notifications all along. I don't know about that piece, but we'll definitely look into that and see if that's a possibility.
I think we're making progress.
Things that, I'm sorry.
Now, go ahead, Reverend McDowell.
Very, this theory is responsiveness.
Right.
And if we could respond in a way where constituents, whether it's water, whether it's broken faucet, or whether it's something else. I think responding to that need has a lot to do with the usability of this app. And that's the thing that I don't want to happen. What happened last time, we put an app out there, My Columbia. The usability of that app and following up and making it a collaborative statement that will say to constituents, this is what we're going to do.
Yes, sir.
Well, let's move into some of that functionality and demonstration so that maybe that'll also give you a better indication, as it's still in the works. But we're getting close to launching, Reverend McDowell.
Carmen, can you start our little demo?
Yes, ma'am.
You come up here, and then...
Do we get a lot of spam on our current system? Like, I have a form submission on my personal website. And sometimes there's spam submissions about buying this or call this number. So somebody's gonna weed through all those and make sure this is legitimate requests versus some spam from a Chinese bot or something.
Y'all experienced, will you be able to detect that? Or Sylvia, that might be a Sylvia question.
Yeah, have you got a quarantine button on yours yet? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm talking about my law firm website.
Well, thank you all for having us on, and thank you, Pam, for getting us started, introduced. As mentioned, we've been working on the project for a while, and we appreciate you all giving us the motivation and the guidance to get started on revisiting this. Reverend McDowell, you certainly have some good points about the importance of making sure that we are responsive to the citizens as they put forward their requests. And I think that was definitely understood to the project so that we understood that because a lot of the responses from the cases, tickets that we get from citizens are actually being placed in CityWorks. When we ran live, we realized that was one of the gaps. They were updating requests in CityWorks, stating when things were done. And then we had to do redundant entry into the GovQA portal to now tell the citizen that it's done. So by having the integration, we kind of fixed that because the integration will pass the update to the system of records so that the citizen gets that update as well. And that kind of tightens the gap and shortens the timeline for, between the citizens getting that update. So I think that in itself would help. And then also, as Pam mentioned, we had several forums and pep rallies and meetings with the staff at multiple times, met with them to kind of ask questions. What do we need to do to help you get the information in here faster, sooner? Teams are out in the field now, working in CityWork. So at the time that they're completing the work, rather than having to bring paperwork back, so administrative staff are typing in the responses. There, the technicians are out in the field, and a lot of them are keying in the updates themselves. So now the information is in CityWork sooner, or the Work Order Management sooner. So therefore, it's being passed to the CRM sooner, so that helps tighten that gap as well. So I think between the meetings with the staff, helping them understand the importance of getting this, you know, we've got to be transparent with our citizens. We want to provide this good service. Management, upper management has come out and spoken to them, clarified that they support this and we all wanna provide this good present for our citizens. I think we've got good buy-in from the staff. I think the technology's gonna support it. So we're kind of in a good, on the right track to help with that. In addition, there is reporting in the system. We have right now set, for the most part, several of our templates. You know, we will try to give you an update within 48 hours about what's going on. And then we'll have different escalations from there. So within at least 40 hours, eight hours, y'all to know what's happening. You know, we got it, or we can get it done, or it's gonna be delayed. So staff understand that needs to be done. So we'll keep an eye on that. If things aren't on track, the reporting will tell us, and we can kind of modify and move forward with that. We have training planned, our first user training. That'll be the staff who will be making sure that the tickets are being processed and handled starting on the 13th and then again on the 20th. So we'll reiterate that and certainly make sure everybody's still, you know, on track with understanding that that's the path.
Carmen, I don't, this part is not a question you probably can answer, and I can get an answer later. But for Clint and the other ACMs, the technology in the field. You know, at one point, the iPads weren't, we were deploying iPads to field services. But it sounds like we have a pretty good handle on who has them now. Because, again, this works best, like you just said, if they are able in real time to be updating what they're doing in the field.
Yes.
So as we're going into budget season and knowing that we wanna make sure this is often functional, I'll need to hear what that's looking like from the technology.
Several departments already in the field, several coming on board soon. If you see iPads in the budget, just approve.
iPad, My Cola SC.
Right, okay, yeah, that's an approval right there. All right. So this is our, as we know...
It's iPads.
Right. And we've got lots of security wrapped around that, tested, vetted.
Well, I know, y'all got it secured.
Lock it down.
No problem with it, because they won't let you in.
Yeah, well, you know, just chating the paperwork, check with, uh... He'll be over there, he got you covered. All righty. So our tool will have a website as well as an app. So there's an option, you know, you can install the app. Certainly, we think the app is a great thing, but for those who, you know, folks still have a flip phone or may not want the app installed, they can always pull up their computer or go to the park and pull it up on the website. And so this is our web presence right now. As Ms. Wilson mentioned, we aren't finished with our branding, still working with our marketing team to get there. But just as placeholders right now, we got our background picture. Of course, we are Columbia. And then this is the functional presence here of the system. So let me figure out what I'm doing with this. Erica, am I moving? Yeah, okay. I'm looking...
It'd be easier for you to run it from over there?
Okay, well, I think I'm here.
Here?
All right, yeah, looking sideways. But here's these three buttons, as Pam mentioned. We were talking about the option to have nine of them. We, you know, try not to be too cluttered here. So from our history, you know, we know that lots of people are looking to pay bills. Right now, we've got this pointing to pay their water and solid waste bills from the online portal, linking to our utility billing system. We could link this to the payment center where they could see all things to be paid, parking tickets, you know, and everything, whatever, speeding ticket. It's just a link to one of our payment sites, and we could do that. The trash information, the GIS tools, that people like to search and find out if they're in the city, who their council person is. And that's a highly utilized tool, so we put that out there as an option to, front and center. They can get access to that.
I'm worried, I know. I'm all over the place.
All right. There's still an option under these ellipses here to have more links. So we did that. They can, we've got Cola links here. They can pay their bill again, same option. But there's a Columbia Water link that will take them to the Columbia Water site. They've got the city events calendar, they can go to the homepage. And we could add additional links, you know, in categories as we desire.
We've got that incredible service guide that we have, this printed, really needs to be on there. You know, along with, I think, Randy and the Parks team, they have all those programmatic for youth that's going on. We ought to have those in there, because that's what people keep asking me about. We're sharing that information with them, but in a printed copy. If we're gonna do the app, I think it'd be great for people to see what's there. And maybe it's just a link.
Summer programming that Ms. Herbert has now helped with. What is that for summer?
Service lines.
Summer, the youth services guy, yeah.
Yes, the youth services guy.
But even the, even the service, the service guide that we have that has everything from contacts at sister care and transitions and all the programmatic out there that's available in the city, I think it's just such valuable information. We ought to figure out how to link that in.
Okay, right. And we could create a services category, maybe, and stick Parks under there and different things, or a Parks category. We thought about doing a recreation. But, you know, we have the option to do as many categories, as many links that we want. We put a few social media out there, just Facebook and Twitter. We could add additional ones. We're, you know, we're in control of this area to put more options. So we decided just the three visible links on the front, and then we'd stick most everything else behind the more option. And customers can get used to going back there to check things.
And to know to get to those additional ones is only by clicking on the ellipses?
To get to more options, right.
So it would probably be an educational piece to, for people to know to get to that.
And we talked about making a little video, we...
Would we not just add a button on the front?
Say more.
Yeah, something to make it more, more identifiable.
Instead of it being hidden down here. Or change it, say, more links.
Made it easier to access.
Okay, okay.
Don't see what you mean.
Maybe a fourth button that makes it more obvious.
All right, I lost my cursor again. Let's see. Erica, you see it? I'm looking sideways, yeah, let me get out she's over here.
So are we thinking a button here or just changing more options, maybe? Well, we'll just...
I think you make it easy, put a button that has more on it.
Yeah.
And they can just click it, and it lists all the, directs them to the links. That way, you're not, you don't have so many buttons that people get confused.
All right, so the goal here is, um, citizens can submit requests. So they can, if they are logged in, they can see their request or not request, or they can create a request. There's an option to do it anonymously. We can, as a city, can choose what things we want to submit anonymously. So if we want them to submit code enforcement anonymously, but not a request to have their meterly... but not a request to have their uh meter leak or uh to check uh, you know, um, fallen tree uh, or they indicated that they did not want a person to report a fallen tree without providing their name. That will not be allowed to be anonymous, so.
Yeah, and, and you.
Not anonymous, right? Okay.
They want to not distract, you know, deter people from reporting because they are afraid to be identified.
Wait, wait, so it's not anonymous?
But like a fallen tree can't be anonymous. So, so we've kind of gone with the departments, and talked to them about which things can be anonymous and which things can't. Of course, if somebody does something anonymous.
They can't get a follow-up.
Exactly, because we can't follow up to nobody. So, you know, that's part of the, if someone has a desire to get those updates, they're gonna have to give us some information about themselves.
Code enforcement again can be anonymous, is that what you want right now?
Yes, yes, code enforcement can be anonymous right now. Yes.
What, what other ones? Off the top of your head, just out of curiosity, you know?
Right, it was any, it was, so it, it, it wasn't specific to the department. It was more specific to the request. And so if there needed to be someone to follow up, with someone at their address kind of thing, those things we didn't make anonymous. But, but like a traffic lights out, or something that's um, kind of an immediate thing. Um, there's, you know, a pothole cover that's missing.
I like to see those once y'all kind of.
Yeah, because we had, we do have a formalized list, but it is based on the request, not so much by department. So I, I think that, if that clarifies anything.
I was complaining about a water leak by my house. You would want me to. And I'll complain, complaining about a parking meter in five points, doesn't matter whether I did it or.
Right, right, right. And that's how we tried to, right.
Which meter it is.
Yeah, right, but it's germane to, to whether or not you're important to the complaint.
Right.
That's the way you should look at it.
Exactly. And that's the way we tried to kind of parse them out, was based on whether we needed you to be, help us with, help us with solving the problem.
Solve the problem.
Exactly.
Or you're important to know what about the continuation of the problem.
Exactly.
Once I let go of it, the parking meter is broken, I don't need to be told that it's fixed.
Right, and you don't care. But you don't want to go back to that parking meter and it's still broken.
You wrote that number down, didn't you?
Yeah, that was figured out, the second one.
Alright, so Ms. Carmen, what are you gonna show us?
So um, I, I logged in and I want to report a request, so it's pulling me into, um, I was here. And so it says to me, what's the type of request that you want to report? So I can choose whatever type I have. And we have various type of requests grouped here. I can um contact the mayor and send him a request. I can contact council, and send them a request about an issue if I want to talk about it. Um.
Can I use that button?
Those cannot be anonymous.
Oh, it won't be.
Speaking of anonymous, with, with the, the list that you showed earlier, because you have F O I, would you put a, a whistleblower or an H R piece in there so that, if something comes up, people could anonymously report something that goes directly to H R or?
And, you know, that's a good point, though. We do have, we, we do have um.
If you can or what, but.
We have um ethical advocate, which is our, a platform where people can whistleblow or report H R related, um, issues. So we could link that one to that.
I don't think that's what this was for.
It's not. And that, see, that's been part of the, that's been part of our struggle is, what all to put in it, what all to leave off, you know, what's, what is really the goal? Because we've, we've certainly talked about, and it's grown and we've tried to brought it back together and it's grown and we brought it back together. So we've tried to focus on the core things that people will report requests.
This is more for citizens too. Like, they probably want something for.
Yeah.
Eternal or whatever y'all.
I would start off as, as cola one oh one.
Right.
It's easier to add to it than it is to subtract from it.
Right. A- and again, we've tried to look at what the past has told us. What looks like the most requests people have submitted, and what, what does that look like? So we've tried to use that as a basis. Carmen, go ahead and put in a request. Pick a department and go ahead. So she picked solid waste. She's gonna pick an address. And now she's on the web base, the website, but it essentially will, will work the same way.
Saw some other requests that I had submitted at this other address, so it just asked me, you know, are you about to do this again?
Oh, that's cool. Okay, so there's not like duplicate requests?
So, um, but I said, yeah.
So it, it will weed out, so if you got a neighborhood and there's a leak and you get ten people, send in ten requests, it kind of culminates it?
Well, it will warn you that it's already there and ask you, do you want to? And then you can say.
We're gonna want to.
Right. Or you can just acknowledge that you just added to the communication on this or something. I agreed to, to um bombard it.
There's a real person on the backend who looks at this, not like A I or anything, right? So it'll be a real person.
Yes, yes, yeah. There'll be real people looking at the request.
We'll get a text message.
You're right. But we're not there yet.
Yeah, I miss us too.
If I had a photo, I could upload it. Um, I don't right now. It also offers me a chance to um go to the solid waste wizard and check, because maybe today wasn't my recycling day. So I could verify that if I wanted to, but I know that today was my day, so I'm gonna submit it.
And Carmen's put a few in here because she's been practicing. But it would show that request that you've submitted, and then you'd be able to.
And so my request is in here. Um, this is one I did previously where I had a, a, a um attachment that was my garbage that they did pick up. I took a picture and told them it was full. And here was my recycling earlier and it was full. But I also can see down here that I have a message. So I can take a look at it. It was from my other one, I suppose, that says, thank you for submitting your request. Our staff will provide to you, or will update, provide an update to your request within two business days.
Do you think that makes sense to put that in there?
What?
About this particular one?
Yeah, I mean, if I'm calling about garbage, I don't want it sitting out there for two more days.
So it, so that may be one of the. Yeah, that's one of the tests. But, but that is part of what we've talked about, is, you know, that response, it needs to feel like it's not A I and somebody's just making it up. It is an actual response from a person. So we've talked about that. And departments have people assigned to look at the request and make the appropriate response to the request. It does.
So I live in District One, I can fill a mine out, get my request in my email, screenshot it, text it to my representative. If it doesn't say the date, say, hey, Tina or Councilwoman Herbert, when am I gonna get my trash picked, picked up?
And she'll tell you she'll be on her way over there to get it for you.
And it's gonna take me a week to find that email. And be like, oh, that's the email that they sent. I'm just real slow.
I'm, I'm wondering if two business days is too short on some of them.
And, and that won't be the, that won't be the response to some of them. It will depend on what it is.
Immediately, so.
That's probably a, you're right, for that.
That's just a test.
Wouldn't have been the answer, probably. But it shouldn't have been. Bad customer service track. But then that goes to our.
Yeah, so that's part, right. So that's part of the back, and that's part of the discussions we've had with the departments. What makes the most sense? And how are we gonna respond in a way that reflects how we want the responses to be?
Try to have some type of messaging within twenty-four hours to somebody. Doesn't mean that you solved the problem, but it's, hey, we're working on this. You know, you wait forty-eight hours.
We have received your.
Or something like that, I can't, I mean, our solid waste folks. Their response might be, we already dropped it back off, no one knows. They were pretty effective, but.
For something like a leak check, depending on if it's during a hard freeze or not, it's a, but, but we could do is respond with, you know, we typically will check, and to see groundwater service line or main line break within X days. And, and what a service level expectation, kind of, kind of communicate that, that, okay, we're calling utility locates within X days. Then excavation of, you know.
Here's the process.
And, and then if they want to, they can get updated. Once we've checked it, they can get updated. Once utility locates have been called in, updated. Once the excavation is scheduled, those sorts of things.
So with, with this, if, when, when you, when the, so you, you get a response, let's use water. Got a leak. I've reported it. They've sent me back a work, work number. Three days later, I haven't seen or heard anything, just use that as an example. I'll punch in that, I'll go back to my message, I'll punch in my work order. At that point, whoever's answering that ought to be able to say, here's what's going on. We ought to be, that's, that's my hope, is that we could respond and say, pumps has been, been, you know, dispatched. They should be there within twenty-four hours. After they've done u- utility locates, we will be able to dispatch. This is the pri- you know, it normally takes, you know, depending on the situation, twenty-four hours for us to fix it and another forty-eight for us to pave it. So people have some type of, and I think that's what I'm hoping for is that, that it becomes an easy for our staff to dialogue back with the others. Some may be as simple as one line message response, but others, I think.
I mean, you're right, you're right. I mean, I think, yeah, I just had a really good experience with an electrician at the house next door to mine, where I live. And first thing he did was they booked me for Monday this week. But, they came back and said, we're, we're, we'll contact you within an hour Thursday, if we have time Thursday afternoon, between three thirty and four. Okay, so they texted me at three o'clock and said, we're out for Thursday. But we'll, we'll keep you as a potential work in on Friday. Friday came around, no big deal. Came in and said, alright, Friday's out too, we'll see you first thing Monday morning. Seven o'clock in the morning on Monday, I got a text saying we'll be there between eight thirty and nine fifteen. And, and that's, that's perfect. So, so I didn't waste any time having to worry about what's going on. Now, maybe they overinformed me because they should have just told me, we'll see you Monday. So, so maybe, you know. It didn't cost me any. It's not like I stayed there, you know, when, when, you know, sat in the driveway for two hours. So I think it's, I think Angela and Tyler are right. I think you gotta, I think you gotta personalize certain things, to, to make it not look like this is.
Yep.
You know.
That's been a big part of the configuration and breakout sessions with the departments, and kind of formulating that workflow and what are our responses gonna be? What makes sense? And what can we do? Because we don't want to over.
Overpromise.
Right. I mean, we want to do the things that we can manage. And I've consistently told them that, like, what can you do? What can you manage? What can you keep up with? Yeah. So we try, we, we, we're trying to avoid that and just being, being realistic.
I don't think he knows. Rev, you're not on mute?
So just, because I know everybody's hungry and we, we wanted to let you guys have the demo. Um, we are still like, like, um, like Carmen said, we're working on end user training. We would like to do kind of a soft launch on the twenty-ninth. Um, if we are able to do that. We had to move one of our training dates because the guy that's training is in California and he's, was scared that he wouldn't have connectivity because of all the storms out there. So that's our plan. We also are looking at the potential of, you know, kind of rolling this out with the promotion of the other marketing, things and trying to, because it's all about getting the word out that this is out here, this is new, this is available, to get people to adopt it and to use it. So we wanted to take advantage of that opportunity as well. And so we, we definitely are looking at that as a, as a potential. But I, I want to acknowledge the fact that Carmen Flemings and Krishana Sutton and, and, and Missy and, and Bud, and um, program management and budget. Um, Tiffany Latimer, who would have been here today, but fortunately she's out. She takes the bulk of this customer service. So she's been integral in this process. Her and all of her staff have really been engaged and really been interested. Exactly. So she's, she's been definitely dialed in and helping us work through this and make sure we are considering all the things. Um, the I T staff, um Cory and Sylvia. Um, and you know, when you start naming people, then you run out of people. Clint has been um, on our team meetings. Um, but we've had a lot of people engaged in this, so that this is successful. Erica for our constituent, Shanique. Um, so we've been reaching out to lots of staff to make sure that they are working with us to, to make sure this is successful. So that's the next steps, you know, that's our goal.
And the legis, like, want to know, because the legis, the, you know, the legislators are just, which that's not gonna change, but, they're so used to just going direct with her, but I think it'll be great for their statehouse staff to know, once we get this app up.
And when we do, we'll let the county know too, because you know, so many people call the ombudsman because they're not sure who to talk to. We ought to make sure that they have that link. But my problem is on the other side of that is I can't get the county to do something. And, I mean, I got a lady on Wyndham that calls me every day because the county won't move these trees. And I'm like, there's nothing I can do about it.
Yeah.
Your rep's not gonna help you, you, you need to go to the council meeting. I don't know what else to tell you.
Maybe, I'm, I'm old school. I like, there's a complaint, I pick up the phone or call somebody, a nice person makes me feel better than an angry message.
Yeah.
But I think it's very, it's really efficient, definitely really efficient.
Yeah. And we'll still offer that. You know, people can definitely call, we'll still have our customer service line available. What they'll do though is they'll put it in here so that that person.
David's followed, yeah.
Can follow if they want to.
It's amazing to me how many people, since we started doing the, the digital meter at water, take advantage of the alerts. I mean, it's made a big difference. I think, I think this will help for, for one, it gives people ease of mind because now, more people are using technology than ever. I mean, it's just easier for somebody to go, but I think you gotta keep all those options open. Because you do, you have some people, I, I'm a person who likes to pick up the phone. I mean, it's just, that's what I've done my whole life, so that's what I wanna do.
So it's certainly a work in process.
Madam City Manager, all of the staff, this is great work. This is what we talked about two years. And yeah, it took us longer to get where we want, but all this information we got today is so, it's, it's so important for us as we move the city forward, so important for our, our citizens, our employees. And to my fellow council members, this is why we gotta have work sessions and you gotta keep your Tuesdays open, because this is the type of information that they want to share with us. And when we don't meet in, in this for a couple months, you think things aren't moving forward, but we really are moving a lot forward. We're doing more than we've ever done in the city. And it's all for the benefit of our citizens, our employees and the quality of life. And so I want to thank y'all for where we are today. I'm looking forward to the Matrix group and what they have to say. I'm very excited about the Crawford group. Um, you know, we've been talking for two years about telling our story and I think we finally get to tell our story. Um, and just the little things that they've done so far are such a positive reflect on our city, yeah. And just that picture and the, the way they tied in the colors and everything about it, you know, I, I noticed they didn't have Together though on there, so I was a little disappointed by that.
Well, it's a mockup, so we, we, we kind of pull from them, but it's gonna look a little bit different.
They don't know that technically yet, so, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Reverend McDowell, did you want to say something?
I tell you, I'm, 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 I'm thrilled at the, the newness and the availability of that. I'm, I'm thrilled with that. But I'm also, I also understand that there are some broken promises that the previous app sort of provided to folk that, uh, if we don't change that, the perception of our city is gonna change. And I don't want our city to be a city of broken promises.
Yes, sir.
Some of these folk, some of these folk made tickets, created tickets, and they were never, ever handled. Let's go forward in a new and positive way and to make this thing a consumable. And folk are able to say that this city of ours has launched a program that is accessible to everyone and that it is not, it is available for everyone. And that it is not, uh, app that's gonna promote, um, broken promises. Thank you, Ms. Rev.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you all for pushing, you know, pushing for these items and all that we talked about earlier regarding engagement and placing value back in, and autonomy back in our employees too because we have to with all of this, keep connecting those dots. And I'm definitely here for that part. So we're excited to, um, give you these updates, but we also have to see them through. Um, probably set us stuck to my original plan, Ms. Erica, that I had our, I think I had typed it about right that we would have been doing lunch at the start of item four and doing it working. But we're gonna keep, keep going with one last quick item. If it's okay, then have a clean break before you go into executive session. You can get your lunch as we're going into executive sessions. There's some quick update with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. ACM, Henry Simons, along with our consultant director. Davis is here and our project, are you project managing this work? Are you managing this project? Yeah, okay, so our deputy director, Kenya Bryant is here also, but I, I'll let Ms. Simons make introduction.
Well, thank you, we won't, we won't be long before you, uh, this afternoon. Um, let me just, let me first off, uh, say, uh, thank you to our mayor, of course, our entire council, our city manager for allowing us to move forward with the ten-year master plan for Parks and Recreation. We do feel like this is a critical move in terms of the innovation and future of, uh, Parks and Recreation. And it's, it's another step closer to being accred- accredited as a department as well. We are seeking our accreditation through the National Recreation and, and Park Association. So this is a, a really nice step, uh, towards doing that. Uh, so we are very excited about, uh, where we're going, where we are and what we're gonna, uh, do today. So what we wanted to do today is go through a few slides with you. Um, before we get, before we get knee-deep in the actual planning of the, uh, the actual master plan, we wanted to make sure that our council understood, uh, what the process is gonna be, what the timeline is gonna be, uh, as well. Uh, before, we, we've had our initial kickoff meeting, so we had an internal meeting with our consultants who are with Weston and Sampson. Uh, so we did some things, we did some tours as well, but this is just the preliminary stages of it. So we wanted them to assist us in going through a couple slides to kind of speak to, uh, the work that's gonna be done. So, uh, we have, um, Daniel Biggs that I think he, is he on the, I think he's on Zoom. Okay, Daniel Biggs is the project manager with Weston and Sampson. He's on, uh, Zoom. And then I have with us Kip Gearhart. He is the, uh, South Carolina Regional Manager for Weston and Sampson. So he is gonna take us through, uh, a few of these slides and then we'll take any questions that you all may have. Kip.
And ACM Simons, it was key to do this now, the timing because of the touchpoints in the community. I think you wanted the mayor and council to realize that this was gonna be being discussed with community and stakeholders.
Absolutely, and, and we wanna talk about that through, through the presentation. Let me also thank, uh, Randy Davis, our director, as well as our deputy director, Kenya Bryant, who's, uh, with us here today as well, so, Kip.
So again, uh, my name's Kip Gearhart with Weston and Sampson, Mayor Councilmember. But thank y'all very much for the opportunity to present this. We realize this is a very important project and, uh, we're here to kind of go over the project. Uh, Dan Biggs is on, is on the line here and he's gonna get us kicked off. But again, just wanna reemphasize what an important project this is for the city of Columbia and how much we appreciate the opportunity. Um, please interrupt us at any time as we go through. We wanna be able to field any of your questions. So with that, Dan, please, do you wanna take it away, Dan?
Great, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Great to see you all, apologize, I'm not there. I'm just taking over the flu, so, uh, you're better off on the screen, uh, from a health standpoint, but I appreciate your time. Go to the next slide. Really quickly, I know everyone is probably aware of the project, but I wanted to just run through our process. Uh, just in terms of where we're gonna go, um, our touchpoints with the community and our schedule so that you all are up to speed and that you're aware of, uh, when we'll be reaching out. And we'll be coming back to share with you our results and to share the information that we've received and definitely have a set of eyes on it before we unveil any recommendations in the final document for sure over the next twelve months. Next slide, please. Fairly quickly, for those of you not familiar with Weston and Sampson, um, we're a multidisciplinary planning and design firm along the east coast. We have three offices in South Carolina, here in Columbia, as well as North Charleston and Greenville. Uh, I am actually located in, um, New York, uh, but I do parks or master plans throughout the east coast. And this is what I've been doing and it's a pleasure to be working with you and your staff. Uh, we've had some engaging meetings already, but I will, I can see a great product in the end already, so.
We've got a great relocation package if you're interested in sunnier and a better atmosphere.
In, uh, I, I lived in Virginia for ten years. And the white stuff that flies during January, February is too attractive, so we'll have to have some strong conversations to see how that lends. But, um, it's, it's great to visit and to, uh, enjoy, uh, everything that Columbia has so far, which is amazing that I've seen.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty thousand New Yorkers can't be wrong, right? They're moving south.
They are. We, we'd just like to add to that, that, you know, we've got three offices in South Carolina and over a hundred folks in the southeast. And we have an office right here in Columbia.
Great, so our, our landscape practice here in planning practice is supported by a, a whole slew of engineering and science practice areas, which makes our plans readily designed and implementable, which is really a goal for a plan that we wanna have your staff to have at fingertips so that there are great ideas, but you can implement them over the next ten years, which is our goal, hi- horizon for this overall master plan. Next slide, please. Um, really quickly, our top four objectives. Um, one, we wanna develop a vision for your Parks Rec- in Parks and Recreation Department and the overall facilities you have. Um, we wanna acknowledge the great work you've been doing for many years, um, as I have been touring your facilities. It, it's amazing as to what you have and the, all the work that's been done so far. We're gonna capture that and we also wanna celebrate the great work that's been done and really, uh, bring that forward in terms of the next future ten years, what you can do for the city. We wanna set the set of goals that you can implement and are prioritized so you know what is the roadmap moving forward. These are not just goals on paper, but really a working document that your staff will have in hand to move forward and to know where is next, uh, location to implement, where to fund and what to really make transformative improvements within the community. I mentioned implementation, it's really our goal that this is a plan that's used by staff every day to know how to operate, how to improve, how to work on your facilities and programs throughout the Parks and Recreation Department. And finally, we're always conscious on being sustainable and innovative. And we'll make sure that everything that we're proposing is financially sustainable, ecologically, environmentally sustainable and just on the cutting edge to what Columbia can have for the next ten plus years. Next slide, please. Um, we're gonna run through a number of our, our phases or our tasks. Um, and these, in theory, build upon the chapters of the final report that you'll see. Um, a couple weeks ago, we had a kickoff meeting with staff. Uh, this is really just to get everyone on the same page. This was the senior leadership group of the Parks and Recreation Department. And we had a great dialogue, uh, that really set the tone for the path forward, to make sure we're on the same page. Um, in our first phase, we're here gonna be looking at, as we're doing, looking at all of your recreation facilities. We're assessing your parks, your trails, your open spaces, as well as your current programs within the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, while we're looking at all those, we're assessing what's the condition? Are people attending programs? Are, is there a lack of programs? What are we hearing or seeing just from overall, uh, of your program offerings within the city? And then we'll also be looking at, um, what other program offerings are within the city from alternative service providers? Again, with the YMCA, uh, what do they have? Because as we think about being sustainable, we wanna make sure that we're positioning you all to not compete with some of your alternative service providers in the city that have great services and that you can complement, but not compete. Next slide, please. Um, so as we start into the process, we assess what you have. Um, we start asking the questions as to what are the needs of this city? And I'm not gonna go through all these questions, um, but we start looking at some of your current plans, current reports, from looking at your demographic trends. You know, are you seeing an increase in youth or maybe seniors? Uh, are you looking at, um, what are the trends that are occurring, curling, occurring? As in, pickleball's a boom right now. Is it here to stay? Is it gonna be growing or is it gonna plateau? So we look at kind of all those factors as to how is the community currently operating and how are you currently fulfilling the needs of the community and how would you fulfill them in the future? We're gonna compare you to other municipalities and other trends around the country just to give an idea as to where do you fit in the overall sphere of the Parks and Recreation needs of a city of your size. Next slide, please. As we look at that, we're, uh, taking your information, we're assessing, I mentioned of all your Parks and Recreation and your community centers. Uh, we start determining what is your level of service. And this very clearly is looking at, are your facilities and are your programs being offered locations of where your population is? Um, are they in the neighborhoods where we need to serve the residents? Uh, are there a variety of offerings, a variety of facilities? So we look at how does the overall facility conditions and what you have offerings in the city cover the, to all, all four districts within the city and the overall city as a whole? In parallel, we're doing the same thing for programs. Looking at, are you serving your populations? Uh, what is, uh, are there attendance, how attendance numbers look for your programs? And are there other, uh, needs within the community just from looking at what you currently offer within the, the city? Next slide, please.
Can I ask a quick question? So, do we, is there a difference between, you know, parks of twenty-twenty-four versus parks of fifty years ago? So, you know, like smaller, more accessible, more in-town, more, 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 different, 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 different?
The answer is quickly yes. Um, and, and also at the same respect, no. So, one thing that is, I would say, a change from many years ago is many years ago, everyone thought that, I wouldn't say everyone, but the thought process was if you had a green space, a playground and a couple parking stalls, you, you met the need of the community without really knowing what does the community need and want? Because every neighborhood is a little different. Uh, every location is different, uh, demographically as terms of interest. So our approach now is really understanding what are the, at a neighborhood level, what are the needs? And how do we, uh, attract, appeal or meet those needs within those neighborhoods? Uh, if you have a, a trailhead, uh, as in a trail network within one of the neighborhoods, it doesn't make sense to have a playground in every point of access that trailhead. But you may have one, uh, decent-sized playground, attractive location that is along that trail so users can ride, stop, use a, uh, fitness center or use a playground and then ride or walk back to where they started. So there's a different thought process in terms of, we wanna know, uh, specifically what is the interest needs of the neighborhood level? Not just a one-size-fits-all cookie cutter place, this playground in a little open space, um, to assume we meet the needs of it.
Would the size of that park also be determined by those same criteria?
Um, so the size to some degree, yes. Historically, the, the thought process was you took the entire population of a city of Columbia and you took, uh, you divide that by a metric. It's that you need to have X, Y, Z acres of parks within the city of Columbia proper. Um, that could mean if you had to have seven hundred acres, it could be all in one part of the city, but you really have a desert per se of park spaces in other areas of the city. So the thought now is that you're where the people are. So you may have, say, three small pocket parks that are spread within a neighborhood of a, a community area that meets the needs as, in contrast to maybe one multiple acre park space that has similar characteristics that's central to a neighborhood. So there's a balance there, but it's not a mathematical, uh, calculation anymore. It's a, where are the people, uh, and how are they going to use them? For example, a park that's isolated by highways does no good. Uh, you need to have sidewalks and walkable, uh, access points to the parks.
All right, that's good, you answered my question, thank you.
Fairly. So I've mentioned we're assessing your parks and your programs, um, but one key aspect of this is public outreach. Um, we use what's called a mixed method approach. And this kind of came, uh, it was happened before COVID, but, uh, kind of elevated the need for this during the COVID times. Where we use a balance between traditional methods, you can see stakeholder interviews, focus group meetings, online surveys and public meetings, balanced with a virtual methods. We have virtual meetings, uh, online surveying, online surveying polling and social media outreach. So we want to get input by many different mechanisms over the course of our project so that everyone does have a chance to give us, uh, an opinion or a perspective in that we can use that as our data, uh, to make sure that we're meeting needs of the community and we're not missing out on the population or demographic. Next slide, please. So for this, uh, project, we're using a couple step process. Um, the first step is we're going to be doing a number of stakeholder interviews, focus group workshops. Uh, this is where we will talk specifically in a virtual setting, uh, over the course of several days, uh, one-hour blocks. We're going to talk to user groups that use Parks and Recreation facilities, uh, of what are their needs, what are their interests? Um, that then will, uh, prompt us to develop an online survey that we're going to develop that will be available and I'll talk about that here in a minute in more detail. Um, but in parallel to that, I, I think we're missing one bullet here, but it says polygamy number one. Um, we're going to have a meeting at each of the four council districts over the course of a couple of weeks. Um, that would be in-person meeting where we would have a night, usually open house, uh, presentation that we'll give and then allowed for question answers. Um, that'll happen in each of the four districts. That's what we're calling our community input session. Um, as that, uh, meeting goes on, um, we're going to have the online survey available. That'll be shared with the entire population of the city of Columbia, um, and now the, open for several months. The second group of meetings is gonna happen a couple months later where we're going to again go back to each of the four council districts. Um, and our thought process in public outreach is, one, want to listen. The second is we want to make sure we share with everyone as to what we heard. So we're gonna regurgitate back everything that we heard from the public. And the third is we're gonna make sure we have confirmation that we heard everything correctly and that the input we received weren't missing any additional information. So that findings presentation, we'll go back to each of the four districts and we're going to share all the information we've heard, uh, the input received to date. And that'll be close to the middle of, uh, summer or, sorry, late spring, early summer. And that'll be close to the middle of summer, or sorry, late spring, early summer period time. Once we've got the information and all that inputs, um, combined with the online survey, we will develop draft recommendations. And we'll, uh, likely come back to you all to share those draft recommendations, um, for each of the park facilities, each of the programs, uh, each neighborhood, recreation centers, et cetera. That will allow us to have that first pass as to whether recommendations, uh, for the city moving forward. Receive additional feedback on that, and then finalize, and a presentation for adoption, uh, for you all, likely in about twelve months or so. Next slide, please. So the, the one piece that I wanna just touch upon in more detail is the online survey. Um, the online survey, we are, are gonna be doing a statistically valid survey. And some will wonder, what is that meaning? Um, basically, we have an online survey that will be created, uh, through a third-party, uh, survey provider. Um, they will mail out to random households within the city, uh, surveys for those users to take. Um, the person will get a postcard, uh, and a link that they can log in, and that data will be received. Shortly after that, uh, the city will post on websites and share in all, uh, social media outlets, um, the same survey, that that will be, we call it an open link. And what happens is, they're all the same questions, um, but we have two groups of data that will come in through our, uh, our subconsultants. So what happens is, we know what the population is, we know, uh, of Columbia, we know who's responding, and we can see and confirm from a mathematical standpoint that that they're receiving, this is really valid.
Thank you.
That, that, uh, will then, um, allow us to confirm that the responses that we're receiving is at a high confidence rate, and that is the consensus of the entire city population, based on, based upon statistically valid data. Um, this is the process we do in a lot of municipalities. Um, what it does is it, um, eliminates those, uh, opinions that may be seen as grandstanding sometimes in public meetings. Um, it allows us to work through the details of, is this really a, um, one perspective or a general consensus of the entire community? Um, so that online survey really is, is a strong point that we will share all the data, um, all the responses received with staff, uh, so they have, uh, what our responses were and, um, what the general consensus is for the questions we're asked across the entire community. Next slide, please. Um, so I mentioned here, this is a little bit of the process, um, but the real key to this is that we will tie the links, uh, in, uh, other presentations for you all as to the results that are received. So you can compare what is what the open link, compare it to the, um, select link, and ninety-five percent of the time, the data is, is in line with statistically valid survey results, um, for consensus of the entire community. So I talked through a lot of the process, um, and every step of the way really is creating a chapter. Um, we basically take each section of the conversation, and we dock in all that and provide appendices for any information that's supporting it. Um, but the key is of having a document that's useful for staff to use, uh, as the, the mission, the pathway forward. So our, our recommendations are going to be prioritized. Um, we're gonna look for where are there matching, uh, funding sources, uh, a way that you can leverage other funding mechanisms to, uh, make improvements to recreation facilities, parks, and programs. And then really wanna, uh, use these as a tipping point to reflect the, the interests of the community, the needs of the community for the next ten years. Next slide. So I kind of ran through a lot of our steps, um, our overall schedule, which is pretty close here. Um, we're in the process now of existing conditions. Uh, we'll be starting after today. Um, some of the public outreach, as I mentioned, um, starting with the focus group meetings. And then we'll have our, um, our public input sessions that I wanna coordinate, or have a staff coordinating with the council members for your districts, to make sure that, um, we can get out and get the interest within each of your districts and communities, um, for input, and then roll through that process through the duration of the project. We look to conclude the project in about twelve months. Uh, December timeframe, uh, is usually about right, uh, but we'll work with staff in terms of scheduling and timing to make sure that we're in line with the option timelines moving forward. Next slide. And that's all I had for you all. I'm available to any questions, uh, and appreciate your time.
So I was, I was gonna ask, um, you're calling this a ten-year plan. Is there a ten-year budget associated with a ten-year plan?
Yeah, so for every improvement we make, we provide budgetary dollars, and then we will work to prioritize those improvements over the ten-year span. Um, so you would have over the ten years of a potential budget cost to spend, uh, for, to make those improvements.
And my question really is on, so after you've gathered this information, are you gonna supply us with basi- basically ideas of what we should do based on those priorities you heard? Are you doing design to go with that? You just sharing examples of what people are talking about?
Yes. Um, so, once we get the feedback, we do have recommendations. Some items will be very straightforward in terms of, you need to add, um, grispy lessons as a program offering, add that to the program description. Others will say, uh, you need to, um, need a multipurpose field. Um, and here's a potential layout that it could occur at one of your park facilities, or a splash pad is an idea you should include at one of your park facilities, 'cause you heard it's missing within, uh, one of your parks. Uh, so we'll provide those concepts to show what that could look like. Uh, one, it helps get ideas, generate thought in terms of community seeing what a plan could look like. And then it helps develop a potential cost and time in terms of making those improvements, how important they are.
So there would be physical programs and, and also facilities, along with a budget?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, any other?
Just, uh, some concluding remarks. I think, again, um, as we look at the master plan and look at the needs across the city, um, I think Daniel touched on this a little bit. Um, what do we don't have? You know, where do we need to be more innovative and creative in terms of recreation? So I'm very interested in kind of going through this process and making sure that, number one, we celebrate what we've already done, uh, 'cause a lot of great work is being done by Parks and Recreation. It's been done, it's being done at the moment. But also, how do we get better? How do we get better in, in providing services to our citizens? I'm anxiously waiting to, to see what that's gonna look like. So, um, any other questions or, or comments about, about the process?
Does anybody else have anything?
Thank you so much. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan would, again, love to have been here, but he is under the weather and, and, uh, looks, he looks forward to it. He could be right there.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you all.
With that, council, we can take a break. I don't know if you want to. You don't quickly get your lunch, but then you'll, um, go into executive session.
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for us to go into executive session for discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual agree- arrangements pursuant to SC Code thirty dash four dash seventy A two, um, as well as receipt for legal advice which relates to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to SC Code thirty dash four dash seventy A two. I wish Howard was still here.
Yeah.
You did a great job.
Is there a second?
Yeah, wait, second.
Second. Hold on.
Um, the bullets include the municipal complex, DMH surplus property, northeast sewer service area, and the transportation penny sales tax.
Second.
You got a motion and a second? No discussion. Madam Clark, please read the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.